Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City of San Carlos City Council meeting for June 10, 2024. And we are all present, so there are no 2449 teleconference requests. And if you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will move to item four. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda from staff this evening?
No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anything from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will move to presentations. Our presentation this evening will come after a proclamation recognizing June 16 through 22 as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week. Yes, please, please come on up. Actually, right over here. Thank you for, thank you for joining us from our, the mosquito and vector control district. Got it. Yes. Which is wonderful. You know, I grew up in the Midwest, and there's a lot of mosquitoes in the Midwest, and I don't know how we do it out here. So no mosquitoes around my house for the most part, so thank you for that. So very happy to make this proclamation, and then we will receive our annual update. So whereas the American Mosquito Control Association has declared the week of June 16 through 22 as National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, and whereas excess numbers of mosquitoes and other vectors spread diseases such as West Nile virus, dengue virus, and malaria, reduced enjoyment of outdoor recreation, hinder outdoor work, and decreased livestock productivity, and whereas in collaboration with other agencies, the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District's mission is to safeguard the health and comfort of people in San Mateo County through a science-based program of integrated vector management. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, John Dugan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby proclaim the week of June 16 through 22, 2024, as Mosquito Control Awareness Week in the City of San Carlos. All right, we can clap for that. Sure, Ron, if you'd join us. Ron is our, one of the trustees on this board, and thank you for all your vector and mosquito control work, Ron.
It's my pleasure.
Very good, so I will hand this to you. Yeah, feel free.
A few slides. I would like to also say that I always feel very small and little coming here. Usually when city councils are, we do all the city councils in the county, and usually city councils are recognizing Pride Month, and then also Juneteenth, and so it feels very humbling to be here, but also really inspirational to see that there is so much care and compassion where we live here in San Mateo County. And as a mother, I just think of the future of, of everyone in this room, and I'm so happy to have such an inclusive place to live. So now I will talk about the tiniest terrors, which are mosquitoes. Next slide, please. We do a lot of work, and all this work is paid for by your taxes. So if you need help with anything listed on the slide, we can come help, and there's no charge. Mosquito control, mosquito fish, identifying little things that might be biting you, helping to keep rats and mice out of your homes, getting rid of yellow jacket nests, doing community education, and checking for different pathogens throughout the county. Next slide. Since it is getting warmer, we're getting into mosquito season, and we're worried about West Nile virus, we would like to remind everybody to please report dead birds. That is very helpful, because we will test the birds to see if they died of West Nile virus, and if we need to do additional work in the area. And of course, in your own backyard and around your home, you can dump standing water to help prevent mosquitoes from growing. We take care of all of the larger water sources in the county, but if you see standing water that's too big for you to dump, you can give us a call, and we can come out and check and figure out the solution for that problem. Next slide. And after you go to Pride Day, Pride in the Park, you can come on Saturday and visit our open house. We will be having a very family-friendly open house at our offices in Brilling Game, and we invite you to all come and see all the, the kind of neat niche little things that you probably don't think about on a daily basis, but we do on a daily basis to help keep you all safe and healthy from mosquitoes and the diseases they carry. Next slide. I'm happy to answer any questions at any time. You can always give us a call at our number or go online, and we can help out.
Great. Thank you, Rachel. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, really appreciate the update. All right. Great, we'll move on to item six, council communications and announcements. Are there any updates from my colleagues? Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to get your attention, but I just, I wanted to thank Rachel. I have learned a lot being on the mosquito and vector control district board. Rachel does an amazing job. I got to visit her in her office, and it's wall-to-wall books and various toys and things that, that she has, because she goes out to all the schools and educates kids of all ages about what the vector control district does. And that, one of the reasons that you don't see a lot of mosquitoes around here is because the, the district does an amazing job. They're on top of it all the time. So it's not that we don't have mosquitoes. We do, but they're on it, and they take care of it very quickly. Okay, I did want to, I had one other item. I'm also on the Housing and Community Development Committee for the San Mateo County Housing. And the Department of Housing just released its Affordable Housing Fund recently, and they made available over $35 million in Measure K Housing Authority moving to work reserves, community impact fees, and permanent local housing funds. And Measure K funds are targeted to former foster, foster youth, community development block programs. And the, this program, these Affordable Housing Fund, they're called NOFA's, which are Notice of Funding Availability. They, they make money available to house over a thousand people in the county, and there were, we looked at 11 projects last week and awarded money in the millions to seven of them that are going to build two or 300 units. I forget what the number is, but it's, it's over 200 units countywide. We don't usually see it here in San Carlos, but they are building many projects in, in almost every city you can think of in, in the county, plus the coast side. And you might also, you may not be aware that last week, very sadly, there was a fire of the largest affordable housing project that has ever been built in Redwood City. Fortunately, not all of the, the project was destroyed. It will be rebuilt. This was a dream of Warren Slocum and the late Don Horsley, who were two San Mateo County supervisors who worked very hard on this all affordable housing project. And it will, it will be done. I'm not sure when it'll be completed, probably in the next couple of years. But I think it's important to point out that when people think of housing and particularly affordable housing, they think only in the city they live in. We think of it only in San Carlos, but it's happening all over the county. And the county, San Mateo County Department of Housing just does an incredible job. I am very impressed by the, the process that they go through every year to vet organizations who want to build these, these, these developments. So anyway, that's my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Good report. Do any of my other colleagues have any communications for us this evening? I will just give a call out to a wonderful event that happened over the weekend. Our community foundation organized a, our newest mural in town. You can see it going up in our sister city alley. That's on the side of the building where Groovy Goose is, so we appreciate all the cooperation there. And it's a beautiful new mural that's always been our sister city alley. It's never been highlighted very well, but we have a local artist, a member of our Art Bias Art Collective through our foundation, connected with an artist in our sisti, Sister City Omura, Japan. Omura is a suburb of Nagasaki. It's on the Omura Bay. It actually kind of has a similar situation that we have here, close to San Francisco on a bay. So it's a really nice sister city relationship, and that's existed since 2012, and this mural's going to celebrate that. And that whole section there, the plaza, if you stay tuned to this whole meeting, you'll, you'll learn more about that plaza as well, which is going to be undergoing some change. And, and I really applaud our artist, Yukali Seki, for just what, what a beautiful piece of work that is. And then our community foundation joined that with a celebration in Wheeler Plaza called the Longest Table Event. And it was, I don't know, it was the longest table I've ever seen in San Carlos, probably about 150 feet or so, and dozens and dozens of San Carlin shared a meal there from our food trucks, and it was just, had a DJ, and it was just another beautiful day in San Carlos. So just wanted to share that. And so we will move on now to item seven, public comment. This is for items not on tonight's agenda. If anyone has public comment they would like to make, and if they're in the room, they should fill out a speaker card in the corner. If they're online, now would be the time to raise your hand on Zoom. We'll pause for just a moment for, see if we get any Zoom hands, but Crystal, do we have any public comment in the room?
Yes, we do. I have one card from Daily Little. If you can approach the podium, please.
Welcome.
I'd like to address a problem that we have down in Central and Laurel Street. It's where I reside. It's a two-way stop going east to west from Central Avenue to El Camino. We have two new schools, or one old school there, and a new school regarding children. We have some really safety issues there. People are excessive speeding, way over, even up to 60 miles an hour down there. People cannot pull out from the businesses because of this, more U-turns in the intersection, and more U-turns in the street. So people can gain a lot of speed going from St. Francis down to White Oaks Way. So if you guys can put on that on the agenda, because the community there is really concerned about it, because it's a mixed group of people, from infants to elderly people, and people are not yielding to people in the crosswalks, so it's a real hazard. It's a real safety issue. So if you guys could work on that, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And we will, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Crystal, do we have any other public comment?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, and no more comment in the room?
No.
Okay, very good. We will move on to the Consent Calendar, which is a list of items subject to our approval. If, do one of my colleagues want to pull anything off of consent for further discussion Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the items on our consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through N, and item O, adopting ordinance number 1615, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18, zoning Section 18.15.120 Underground Utilities, and Section 18.23.210 Accessory Dwelling Units, Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, to exempt specific single-family home projects from the requirement to underground utility service drops.
I'll second.
Terrific. We have a motion and a second. Crystal, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. Terrific. Our consent calendar items are approved. We will move on to item 9A, which is consideration of appointing one youth advisory council voting member for the 24 to 25 term, five voting members for the 24 to 6 term, and two alternate YAC members for the 24, 25 term. Do we have any staff presentation on this this evening? Wonderful, welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dugan, Vice Mayor McDowell, Council and community. My name is Amy Newby, Director of Parks and Recreation, and I would like to introduce and welcome up Emma Lico, our Recreation Coordinator of Youth Development in the community, who will be going through our YAC appointments this evening.
A little shorter. Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Mayor Dugan, Vice Mayor McDowell, Council members, community, and city staff. My name is Emma Lico. I'm the Youth Development Recreation Coordinator out over at the Youth Center. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Dugan and Commissioner Lee for sitting on the Youth Advisory Council panel interviews. We interviewed 18 candidates, and it had a record number of applications this year, so it was a very inspiring session of interviews, and thank you for being there. So following the written application and oral board interview process, the following eight San Carlos youth are being recommended for appointment to the YAC. One is a voting member for the 2024 to 25 term, five is voting members for the 2024 to 26 term, and two as alternate members for the 2024 to 25 term. Before we move on, I would like to take a moment to recognize the outgoing YAC members that have been graduating and moving on this year. Some of us are still joining us, a member of, members at large. First of all, we would like to recognize Samina Ginwalla, who has served two two-year terms and one one-year term with the offices of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary held. Then we'd like to recognize Anika Gupta, who has held one two-year term in the offices of Vice Chair and Secretary. And then next, Eva Stathenkoplis, who served one two-year term with the Office of Public Relations held. Eva McLinden, who had a one-two-year term. Hannah Deliso with one two-year term. Alora Metta with a one-two-year term, as well as Michael Sandoval with a one-one-year term as an alternate. If you could all wave if you're here, that would be great.
Thank you so much for your service.
Yeah. So then, moving on to our council appointments, our Youth Advisory Council appointments tonight. First of all, being Karan Sagani, who is a Sequoia High School freshman and who is up for appointment as an alternate on the Youth Advisory Council. Next, being Aditya Tikho Gupta for the 2024 to 25 term from Sequoia High School, who's a freshman, seeking a one-year appointment on the YAC as an alternate.
And perhaps just stand when your name's read, if you guys could stand.
That would be great. And then next up, we have Saba Rahimi. Saba is a junior at Carlmont High School, seeking an appointment of a one-year term on the Youth Advisory Council as a voting member. Next, we have Alora Metta, who is a sophomore at Carlmont High School, seeking her second appointment on the YAC as a voting member. Next up, we have Nikhil Nuna, who is a freshman at Carlmont High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the Youth Advisory Council as a voting member. And then we have Maya Kacholia, who is a Carlmont High School freshman, seeking a two-year appointment on the Youth Advisory Council as a voting member. And then we have Eva Greenbaum, who is from the Nuava School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member, and our only middle schooler being up for appointed today as a seventh grader. And then we have Hannah Kent. Hannah is a sophomore at Carlmont High School, seeking a two-year appointment on the YAC as a voting member. And those are our Youth Advisory Council members up for appointments today. And then we'd also like to take a moment to recognize all of the council members in the room who have already been appointed in the last year, or who are our members at large, if you all could also please stand. And then I would like to ask council to make a motion to appoint them as the Youth Advisory Council members.
Great. Thank you very much, and you, you guys can have your seat. And yeah, do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments of our Youth Advisory Commission? Pranita?
Oh, I was going to make the motion, but congratulations, and job well done. Can I just, go ahead.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last time that I've been the liaison to the Youth Advisory Council, and just want to say it's been an honor to, to help out and to interview the candidates. I apologize, I missed it this year. I think we were out of the country.
That's okay.
But it's always been a joy, and every time I do it, my faith in youth is renewed, and I know that we are in good hands for the future. So congratulations to all of you who are stepping off or serving this town, and congratulations to everybody who are either remaining or coming on.
Thank you, Ron. And yeah, I'll just echo that to say I really enjoyed the, the interview process, getting to know you folks to some extent, and just how thoughtful, engaged our new committee members are. It inspired me to know that you could be, you know, in middle school and high school and be thinking all the, the big thoughts about our community, so I really appreciate that. And just appreciate folks who are willing to stand up and serve their community. That means a lot, and what a, what a great lesson you're carrying forward from this as well. And we need the help. You guys provide us with a lot of good input, thoughts and advice, and help keep our Youth Center and our whole Park and Rec Department focused on the right stuff. So your work is now beginning. Very good. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I can do it. I will try the best with your names. I move to appoint Saba Rahimi to the Youth Advisory Council as a young voting member for the 2024-25 term, Alora Metta, Nikhil Nuna, Maya Kachilia, Eva Greenbaum, and Hannah Kent to the Youth Advisory Council as voting members for the 2024-26 term, and Karan Sangini and Aditya Gupta as alternate members on the Youth Advisory Council for the 2024-25 term.
Second.
Terrific. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, just, just, since it's a new business item, and there's a lot of people here, I thought we might open it for public comment before you vote.
Good, good point, Greg. Appreciate that. Yeah, do we have any public comment in the room on this item? And now would be the time to raise your hand if you have public comment on Zoom.
There are no hands on Zoom, and I do not have any slips for in-person.
Okay, very good. In that case, we will move forward with the roll call.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Benkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes, and measure passes, so our newest members of the Youth Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one thing?
Sure.
Forgot to give a shout out to Emma, who does a fantastic job with this group of young, young adults, so thank you.
Yeah, now, to make it official, we'll be, they will be taking their oath of office.
Can just line up maybe right there? I think Emma said she did it right. Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, if you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you're about to enter? Okay, great, great. I have Eva up first. Okay, you can go ahead and just sign, oops, sign that. Thank you. Maya? I think he closed it. Hannah? Thank you. Hannah? Oh, sorry, it's right there. It's okay. Thank you. Alora? Nikhil? Yes. Thank you. Saba? Right on top. Thank you. And Karan? Thank you very much. Congratulations, everyone.
All right. All right. We will move on to Item 9B, consideration of adopting a resolution endorsing the downtown advisory committee's recommended street design as part of our downtown specific plan. Hi, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Council, Lisa Porras with the Advanced Planning Division. I am really pleased to be here today to present you all with an update on the downtown specific plan and the Streetscape Master Plan project, and to seek council's direction and feedback through consideration of a draft resolution that would endorse the DTAC's recommended street design and direct staff to proceed with technical analysis. I'm joined by Jim Stickley, Principal with WRT, and Al Savay, our Community and Economic Development Director, and we are all available to answer your questions this evening. So last April, the council asked that we proceed with a comprehensive street design network based on the permanent closure of the 700 block of Laurel Street. And through the council's strategic objective for an inclusive and robust community input process, we held ideation workshops, issued a survey, met with internal stakeholders across city departments, external stakeholders like the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, and Samtrans, and more. And we also met with the Economic Development Advisory Commission, the Parks and Recreation and Culture Commission, the Youth Advisory Council. So the DTAC's recommended street design embodies thoughtful consideration in conceptualizing all of the input we have received. The plan's boundary includes Laurel Street functioning as a central spine extending from the north at Holly Street to Greenwood Avenue to the south, El Camino Real is to the east, and Walnut Street to the west. The plan also includes San Carlos Avenue and Cherry Street segments that lead to and embrace the civic center. So we are seeking the council's direction through resolution to proceed with the DTAC's recommendations and to go forward and test the street network with a traffic operations study and a parking study. This is our presentation outline for tonight. The bulk of the presentation will be on Outline Number Two, which is the DTAC's recommended street design, and Outline Number Five, which is to hear from the city council and the public. So now on to a bit about community input. So instead of a long list of civic engagement dates and events, this gives you a visual snapshot of all the engagement that has been taking place since May last year. We went through several iterations and options for street design layouts, and along the way, we were not only looking at the design options, but also how the design facilitates and works with the city's existing programs, such as the Art and Wine Fair, and also with the community's ideas for new, fun, and engaging activities that they would like to see in downtown San Carlos. There were many test fits to ensure the design could accommodate both existing and new ideas for activation and programming. The DTAC discussed different design options at several of its meetings, and on March 19, three months ago, the DTAC recommended a street design that you will be hearing about more tonight. Now, I won't read all of this, but the DTAC also provided staff and the consultant team with requests for further inquiry. They do want to see how the designs come together for the two new plazas, well, actually one new plaza, but a redesign for Harrington Park, and also opportunities for the 600 block of Laurel Street in the Wheeler Plaza area there. They are also interested in ideas to manage parking and ensuring that the alleys are addressed, and they also want to see policies that support our businesses. Following the DTAC's recommendation, we took the design to the Planning and Transportation Commission on May 20 and received their input. So the Planning and Transportation Commission was curious about plans for what we would do with the outdoor dining parklets, and they were also curious about whether the 600 and 800 block would have the flexibility to transition into closures should the city decide to pursue that at some point in the future. They were also interested in the selection of street trees for Laurel Street, and we'll talk about that more later this evening. They inquired about future changes in traffic circulation, what those might look like, again, curious about future testing outcomes, and they also wanted to know if the city would charge for private use of outdoor space in the right-of-way. They wanted to ensure that safety measures were implemented along El Camino Real for bicycle safety, and to ensure that the Arroyo Avenue underpass is an inviting gateway from the east to the downtown. They were also interested in how we were going to come up with solutions to manage parking, particularly making sure that parking was available for short times to accommodate deliveries, pickup and drop-off, and ensuring that there were accessible spaces in the areas where it's most needed. They wanted us to think ahead about construction and the interruptions and impacts to small businesses, and to develop a strategy to address the alleys sooner rather than later. So now, before I hand this off to Jim, I want to leave you with the beginning of this project's story. At the outset, we collected much feedback from the community, and then we worked with the DTAC to refine a vision for the downtown. This vision reads, "The downtown is the heart of San Carlos that provides a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, safe, charming, futuristic, and accessible destination for the community. It is a place for celebration and gathering that offers diverse and authentic experiences through a draw of food, retail, services, art, and music in a visually attractive environment for our growing community. Downtown is an inclusive place with easy access for all, opportunities for housing and businesses of all types, and inviting spaces for all users. Downtown San Carlos is a sustainable district with a landscape that supports ecological and community health and well-being." And to guide our thought process and identify the priorities of the plan and its design, the following guiding principles were also created from community inputs and DTAC input as well. And we will share more about these guiding principles in the next few slides. So with that, I would like to turn it over to the lead of our consulting team, Jim Stickley, who is a landscape architect and urban designer, and who's really been at the forefront of helping us put all of this input together in a proposed design. So thank you, Jim. Take it away.
Thank you, Lisa, and welcome, Jim.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's really nice to be here tonight to present our progress on this project. It's really shaping up nicely. We're very excited about where the design is going. We've had lots of great input from all the various commissions and committees and the public that Lisa mentioned. And it's not perfect yet. We're still polishing, and we need to do all the technical analysis on the plan, as Lisa said. But I'm going to walk you through where we are, and then I'm going to be brief. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly because we want to leave time for your questions and comments and for any discussion. So I'll just touch on, I'm not going to read all these, but these are all the points that I'm going to touch on in my portion of the presentation. So the guiding principles, as Lisa said, there are three of those. Placemaking and identity is really what defines the downtown core. It is the three blocks from San Carlos Avenue all the way to Arroyo, and then it's the two blocks width from the edge of El Camino Real up to Walnut Street. And that is the place that we are making. That is the core of the downtown, and so all of these design devices that we're going to talk about are mainly concentrated in this area in creating a very unique experience for the community and for visitors. Downtown vibrancy is about how we activate that space. How do we leverage existing programming, the different festivals you have, all of the successful businesses and restaurants? How do we get all of those things working together to continue to be this activated place? How are the ground floor uses working with the public space? How can those work better? We think there is a better solution to the parklets, and so that's one of the big changes along the street corridor, is to create ample space for outdoor dining. So that's about vibrancy. And then connectivity is how does that all work with all the circulation flows? We want to have balanced flows between pedestrians, bikes, transit, and cars. Cars are still going to be an important part of this, but how do they come to the downtown area and flow to the parking areas that they need to flow to without getting inside the downtown area and detracting from that pedestrian experience? So this is the network that we're looking at, and you know, the 700 block is closed, and the 600 and 800 block want to be more pedestrian-friendly while still allowing cars. So how can that happen, and how can we use this whole network to redistribute circulation in a way that protects that core area? And the alleys play a very important role in that as well, both for circulation, but also for parking and services and other things. So this is the L, what we're calling the L, which is the first block of San Carlos Avenue connecting the train station up to Laurel and then the three blocks of Laurel. And this sort of depicts our overall concept, and you all may recall the two alternative concepts that we started with, which were promenade and the gardens. And in the end, we sort of combined those two. So we retained these garden spaces, which sort of alternate from side to side as you go down San Carlos, and they have rain gardens at the ground plane, and they have groves of trees that are in those spaces, and those are depicted by the pink clusters as you go down the corridor. And those go from side to side, which means that the roadway in the 600 and 800 blocks and then the promenade in the 700 block are also sort of weaving from side to side. So it's a promenade, but it's a promenade that weaves back and forth. And so that's the overall concept, and there's also an important public space, a plaza space in each of the three blocks. So not only Wheeler Plaza in the 600 block, Harrington Park in the 700 block, but also a plaza in the 800 blocks. So they're all sort of unified in that respect. One important part of this concept is that 700 block doesn't feel like the end of the special place of downtown, but that specialness actually extends to the 600 and 800 blocks as well. So the materials we're using, the design devices we're using, extend on all of those three blocks. And that works with the automobile circulation that we're retaining in the 600 and 800 blocks. So just going to get into a little bit more detail. These are sort of the guiding themes that we've identified, sort of an ecological theme coming from the south, originating from the Pulgas Creek and its tributaries, and giving more of an ecological influence, and then more of a civic and cultural influence coming from the north, emanating from the train station. And then these two come and tie together right in the central plaza in the 700 block. And these themes guide a lot of things. They guide public art, they guide the vegetation we use, they guide some of the design devices. So we'll come back to that. And one thing that the themes do is they help us create sort of a hierarchy of street characters. So we have the El Camino Real, which is called the Grand Boulevard character, and that comes, of course, from the Grand Boulevard Plan that spans all up and down the peninsula. So it's sort of the monumental ceremonial boulevard, tree-lined, gracious, accommodating vehicles, but also accommodating other modes in ways that it doesn't do today. And then the yellow, San Carlos Avenue and Cherry are the civic character. So these are the gateway into your community. They're also the streets that connect to your civic center, and the civic center itself wants to feel more as part of the downtown. So those two civic streets, which have that civic character, help to connect, they help to serve as the gateway from the train station and from other places, and they help connect to the civic center. And then Laurel Street then is defined as pedestrian promenade character, and this has a distinctly different character from those civic places. This is more human, more texture, more color, it's slower, it's greener. So that's a much different character. And then as we go southward, from Arroyo southward, it gets even greener, and that's what we're calling our Parkway character. And this, we think, is a really interesting, unique part of Laurel in that there are wider landscape setbacks, and sometimes those have landscape in them, and sometimes there're patios that are set back from the sidewalk. And we think that could create quite a unique experience for that southern portion and be sort of a district all of its own. And so we found ways to actually enhance that further, give it a little bit more randomness than what we have in the portion that's north of Arroyo in the 600, 700, and 800 blocks. So this is the more detailed plan that we've developed now for the northern portion, the north of Arroyo, which is the core area that you're seeing, the 600, 700, and 800 blocks, the alleys, and also El Camino Real and San Carlos Avenue clear at the northern end, and then the southern portion of Laurel, all the way down to Greenway Avenue from Arroyo down to Greenwood, which would be more this Parkway character. So I'm just going to go block by block and talk a little bit about the improvements in each one. So this is the 600 block with San Carlos Avenue on the left on the north end, north is to the left. San Carlos is being reconfigured. The big difference here in this proposal is wider sidewalks, and then the introduction of bike facilities on San Carlos Avenue, the introduction of the rain gardens and groves on the 600 block, and then the improvement of Wheeler Plaza. So those are the big moves. In order to get that space we need for the wider sidewalks, something has to give. So we're actually reducing the parking to be only on one side. And then in the middle, as the road curves from one side to the other, then the parking goes to the other side. So you can see parking for half the block on one side, parking for the other half the block on the other side. So those are the big moves on the 600 block. You can see in the existing cross-section here, we have two rows of diagonal parking, one on each side, two travel lanes, and then sidewalks that are roughly nine and a half feet wide. And then the new cross-section here is proposed parking on one side only, two travel lanes still, slightly narrower, and then a much wider sidewalk, 19 and a half feet if you include the tree strip, which will be paved. So the tree strip has permeable paving and then tree grates around the tree itself. So that's surface area that you can actually walk on and circulate on. And then for San Carlos Avenue, this is the existing condition. It's two lanes in each direction. It's diagonal parking and parklets, so some of the diagonal parking, quite a lot of it actually is used by parklets in the current configuration, and then 11-foot sidewalks, and then a shared bike lane. So this is a Class 3 bike route with sharrows, so bikes and cars share the lane. And what we're proposing here is protected bike lanes, reducing one lane in each direction. So you'd have one lane remaining in each direction, but left-hand turnpockets at both ends of the blocks, both on the 1100 and the 1200 block, would maintain all the left-hand turnpockets to facilitate those flows. Protected bike lane, as I said, and then going to Protected bike lane, as I said, and then going to parallel parking on the sides. And then a much wider sidewalk. And here, we're putting a wider sidewalk on the south side because that's the edge where we're really trying to emphasize that, is that L connection to Laurel. But still some widening happening on the north side as well. We are considering a change to this cross-section, which would be flipping the parking with the protected bike lane. It's called a parking-protected bike lane. And we've presented that to the Bicycle Coalition. They like it. We've gone over it with some of the city agencies. And we're still double-checking with fire access to make sure that that's going to work because it does narrow the actual accessible width. Here, you have the combined width of the travel lane and the protected bike lane. There, you would have a much narrower, sort of unconfined width. So we're just confirming that, but that may be an evolution of this cross-section that we want to continue with. And then this shows you just the character of some of these improvements. And the top left, the groves, the additional space for outdoor dining. In the center top, the Wheeler Plaza, that actually not only takes up the current parking, but the plaza extends out across Laurel Streets. You sort of embrace the street as well as the inner plaza itself. And then the rest of the images show some of the ideas for Wheeler Plaza itself, which could be a very flexible, multi-use space. Lots of different kinds of activities can set up here. We are thinking of a permanent stage on the west end of Wheeler Plaza, where you could have programmed performances, an area for pop-up market along the south edge, but mainly just an open plaza area that can accommodate all kinds of different activities. And then in the 700 block, really all the similar devices, the groves that go from side to side, the central promenade that weaves from side to side, all of these blocks, by the way, I didn't mention this, an important point, all three blocks, 600, 700, and 800 are curbless. So that's definitely something that we want to do in the 700 block. But in keeping with the idea that all these blocks should feel the same experientially, we're proposing curbless cross-sections for all three of the blocks. And where you have vehicles allowed in the 600 and 800 blocks, there are, you know, some devices that we'll need to use, some textured pavers to protect, you know, ADA access between the pedestrian sidewalk and the street. But that's done very commonly. It's done in many places, and we think it can actually be part of the material design and look quite nice. This 700 block would also have a main central plaza right in the middle with a water feature and then Harrington Park that joins in at that central point. And we got a lot of great feedback on some Harrington Park designs from the Parks and Rec Committee and also the Council Downtown Subcommittee about making it more flexible. We had put the stage on the other end, near the alley, and some comments sort of pushed us to look at bringing that stage, not really as a formal stage, but as more of a multi-use pavilion right up against Laurel Street, so right near the central plaza. And then that pavilion could be used for a number of different things. It can be used for performances from either side. So you could have a large performance in the main plaza, or you could have a small performance that has the audience in Harrington Park itself. It could also be used for exhibits. It could be used just to hang out in, put movable furniture in it, and that could be a meeting place. So it's really sort of an iconic pavilion structure that can serve many different functions and sort of become the meeting place for the community. I'll see you at the fountain. I'll see you at the pavilion. And everybody knows what that is and where that is. So these are just some images of the character. You can see a fountain feature in the top left. You can see, you know, spaces that can be programmed in different ways, lots of outdoor seating for dining, but also not for dining, just places for people to sit. That's something that we heard a lot of from our community feedback. And then in the center, the bottom, the pavilion character, this is a much larger structure that we would have, but we're looking at ideas of that being quite a beautiful sculptural element that really becomes an icon of the downtown. And then the 800 block, really all the same devices, curbless, meandering from side to side, the rain gardens, the groves, and then a central plaza right in the location where the entrances are to Bianchini's Market. And then some of the character there. And I wanted to highlight in the top left and center, just the character of these rain gardens and groves and introducing these sort of sculptural benches that are very linear and they trace along the edge of the rain gardens and just create these really pleasant places to sit. And those elements would actually be common to all three of the blocks in where we have those rain gardens and groves. But also in looking at the side streets, and each has its own particular challenges and opportunities, but Arroyo in particular, we want that to be a really easy connection from the East Side Innovation District. So how can we make this more pedestrian and bike-friendly? So we're looking at this multipurpose path, quite a wide path on both sides that bikes and pedestrians share, two travel lanes, and then no parking on that first block between El Camino Real and Laurel. So really make that a very strong pedestrian and bike entrance into the downtown from the tunnel, from the East Side Innovation District. And then Britton, this is another really key connection across El Camino Real. It's not working very well right now, not particularly safe for bicycles. So looking at how can we get a similar multipurpose path and a designated bike width in that, particularly in the first block between El Camino Real and Laurel. And then as you go west of Laurel, then this multipurpose bike path can transition back to the on-lane bike path that now exists on Britton as you go west. And then finally, on El Camino Real, this is the recommendation that is consistent with the Bike and Ped Master Plan, which is to reduce from three southbound lanes that you can see on the left here to two southbound lanes. So both the northbound and southbound lanes would now have two lanes in each direction, and then a center turn lane would be maintained at all key intersections. And what that extra width would allow us to do is to have protected bike lanes, a little bit wider sidewalks, and then room for greening, room for consistent street tree rows on both sides as well as down the center median. So we're starting to get into the materials palette. I'm going to go pretty quickly here, but just wanted to give you a flavor of the materiality that we're looking at. So for the street types I mentioned before, the Boulevard character, the Civic and the Parkway, paving that has these warm tones but a little bit of a darker range, and then a variety of paver sizes depending on if you're in the sidewalk, in the parking lane, or in the street, or in a plaza. So lots of variation of sort of sizes and modules and even different shades, but tending towards the darker range of these earth tones. And then on the pedestrian promenade, this would be the Laurel Street corridor, same earth tones, but in the lighter range, little bit smaller modules, a lot more articulation in the plazas and in the pedestrian spaces, but, you know, staying with that warm color palette. And then for planting, really transitioning to much more emphasis on natives and on drought tolerance. So this would be certainly on the ground plane, a much more sustainable landscape, something that emphasizes wet-dry cycles for the rain garden plants, but also pollinators, seasonal change. And then for the tree palettes, having a consistent species on El Camino Real and on the civic streets, we are considering Chinese elm for those streets and then keeping a crepe myrtle as an accent tree, as, you know, as exists now on St. Carlos Avenue and along Laurel. And then on Laurel Street itself, a different street tree, but a consistent one all the way up and down Laurel. We think Chinese, something like Chinese pistachio could be nice. It has a great fall color. That could add some color and interest. For the grove tree, we're still working on that. We're showing a Kentucky coffee here, but looking at some alternatives. And then perhaps retaining the crepe myrtle for the accent tree on Laurel as well. And then on the south of Arroyo, on Laurel, going to a more native palette, so coast live oaks, California buckeyes, but maybe the crepe myrtle stays as sort of the consistent accent tree, you know, in certain key places. And then again, the ground plane would emphasize natives, drought tolerance for the rain gardens and getting pollinator species into the mix. And then lastly, the furnishings for the Boulevard and the Civic, a little bit more formal, a little bit more use of metal with some wood, and then a more of a subdued color range, what we're calling historic theme for the colors. It's a little more formal, more ceremonial. And then as you go on to Laurel, a more playful color palette, you know, brighter colors, still some metal for some of the furnishings, the bike racks, lighting, obviously, bringing color into the murals, some of the street graphics, but then also introducing the warmth of the wood and these linear benches that run along the rain gardens, warm lighting, both the street lighting, but also overhead, you know, tivali lights used in key spaces, the plazas and alleys and so forth. And then for the central plaza itself, all similar to the previous slide, a more colorful color scheme, the warm woods, the sculptural benches, the water feature in the central plaza, and then mural art and, you know, lots of opportunities for drinking fountains, both for humans and for pets at different points along the block. And then finally, on the Parkway, the south of Arroyo, just more plant-heavy, lot more landscape-forward, lots of rain gardens, bringing in the wood benches and accent lighting. And this color palette would back off of that very colorful one in the core area. This would be sort of a combination of the playful but more of a peaceful color palette that melds more with the greenery in that portion of the downtown. So that was very fast, but I'm going to turn it back over to Lisa, and then we can both be available for questions.
Thank you, Council. So just a couple of slides before we turn it back over to you. I wanted to just take a moment to share with you the list of our next steps, both on the project side, but also a little bit about something that we're looking ahead to, towards, that will serve in kind of the process of implementation. So for the project side, as I mentioned at the beginning, our next step, should we receive the Council's endorsement of the DTACs recommendation and to move forward with technical analysis, we would proceed with a traffic operation study and a parking study. That way, we can test all of these ideas and come back with a list of outcomes. We can talk about trade-offs. So again, tonight is not about selecting this design. It's selecting a design that we can go and test. This is not the final design that we're asking the Council to act on tonight. So we do want to talk about those outcomes and trade-offs, select a final design in the near future. And then that will allow us to continue to draft the specific plan and the accompanying street scape master plan. Because this is a project under SEQA, we have to conduct the appropriate environmental assessment that would follow the plan. And then the goal is to release this public draft environmental document along with the specific plan and the street scape master plan sometime in the winter, and then looking at adoption in the summer. And without getting into too many details, the reason why adoption is a little bit pushed out is because this project needs to follow the general plan reset. So we would be taking that project before you first, and then we would follow with the specific plan, both the downtown and the northeast. So just a friendly reminder, we have three long-range planning projects going on right now. So as far as implementation work, we are looking pursuant to Council's authorization to begin some surveying work. And this would allow us to kind of dive a little bit deeper into the existing conditions, the topography, the utilities. And this work could start, following Council's authorization, as early as July, and then we would be finished by November, and we would have more information to share with the Council. And of course, this type of survey work helps to inform phasing recommendations, future decisions. So a little bit about that, knowing that the Council is eager to see what's possible and what we can actually achieve in the near future. So again, the recommendation before the Council tonight is to consider adopting a resolution endorsing the DTACs design and so that we can test it and come back with some outcomes. So with that, thank you, Council, for your time and attention. Al, myself, and Jim are available to answer any questions you may have.
Trig, thank you, Lisa, and appreciate the deep dive, Jim. So yeah, a lot to cover, a lot to think about here, and, you know, likely the most exciting project we'll see as Council members. So this is a fun one, but a lot to cover. What I propose is let's do two rounds of questions. So try to hold it to two or three questions when it's your turn. Then we'll take public comment and hear from our community, and then we'll dive into our views and any final questions and try to provide some succinct guidance and consensus. So with that, who would like to start with questions? Councilmember Venkatesh.
Put me on the spot. Thank you. It's nice to see you in person, Jim. I'm on the commission with you, so I don't have a lot of questions. But now that we have plans, and I'm just seeing a lot of dollar signs now. So now that we have plans, can we get some finances behind some of this?
Thank you for the question, and we expected this question this evening. I can definitely share with the Council that we're starting to put together some cost estimates, and we actually want to have a meeting with the Downtown Subcommittee before the end of this month. So we haven't sent the email yet to you, but we will want to meet with you and start to have those discussions. So they're starting to come into form in a place where we can share those with you shortly in the near future.
And part of that discussion is about phasing as well. So, you know, where do you begin? What is the sequence to implement all this? So we've started to break the whole plan down into segments, you know, street segments, alley segments, cross-streets, and then we're working on costs for each segment and then, you know, alternative ways that you could sequence that. So that's all in the works, and we're going to be ready to talk about that soon.
Trig, thank you. Yes, this will be a project that lives and breathes over time, no doubt. So that phasing discussion will be very meaty and productive. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I think these questions...
Jim, I think these questions are for you. You mentioned this curbless street concept for the 600 and 800 blocks and that there would be these things in the ground that would be for handicapped people. I'm just wondering about the traffic safety of that. How will drivers know, you know, without a curb to navigate with, you know, how to park along there? Or will it just be the changes in the colors and the painting of the pavement that will indicate it to them?
It's color and its texture. So you're required to have sort of warning strips at the edge of a vehicular and pedestrian facility if it's flush. Often, there are those yellow warning strips that you see on crosswalks, but there are actually paver versions of those that you can get in, you know, in these warm colors. It's a precast concrete paver block, and that's quite commonly used in this type of application. Sometimes it may be appropriate to have bollards to put a little bit more barrier in an area where, you know, there's just a little more guidance may be needed. But yeah, it's really all those devices, it's changes in paver, color, texture, and then sometimes vertical devices, bollards, to achieve that safety. And there are lots of examples of this, so it's done quite successfully, and, you know, we think we can do a design that will be, you know, both attractive, but also provide the proper safety measures.
Thank you. My next question is, you mentioned changes on El Camino Real. I guess I should assume that that requires state approval, since that's a state highway?
Yeah, and that project, I think, is sort of its own animal. I think it's something that we can certainly reinforce with this plan as a goal. It was something that the Bike and Ped Master Plan, you know, took a position on. We think that that direction is a good direction, so I think this plan can say, yes, that's a good direction, and here's how that fits with the downtown plan. But it's a much more complicated plan to regulate and implement, and there's coordination with Caltrans, as you say, and that process will sort of have to happen in its own time. And so I think the way we're looking at this is there's, you know, the downtown core, which is a series of these phased projects that can move ahead, and then at the time that the city wants to really proceed with that coordination for El Camino Real, start those discussions with Caltrans, that process can start, but that's going to take longer.
Okay, thank you. I might have a question or two later, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And Councilmember Venkatesh, I think you have still two more questions?
No, you can pass. I'll pass it to my colleagues.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Rack.
Does that mean you're giving up your questions? Because I have like 12, so that's good.
I can too.
All right. I might need four rounds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you for the presentation, all the hard work from everyone that went into this. Can you talk a little bit, so when you, with some of the changes in terms of the street designs, how much parking are you talking about losing altogether?
So there's a couple ways to look at parking loss. If you're comparing it to what's currently available with the parklets in place, we're not losing that many spaces. It's minimal. But if you're counting all of the spaces that are there underneath the parklets, we're losing about half of those spaces on each block. So if there's 30-ish spaces on the 600 block, we're losing around 15. The parklets actually take up a lot of those 15, so, you know, and one way of looking at it is that we're exchanging the outdoor dining space from parklets to dining zones in the widened sidewalks, and the parking is sort of a no-net-change scenario. But, you know, we will lose a few, and, you know, as I said in the presentation, if we want all of this enhanced pedestrian environment and greening, something has to give, you know, and so the parking is gonna, the parking removal is going to give us the opportunity to, you know, to have these other things.
But, so that's just on those, that's just on the 600 and 800 block that you're talking about, but I think there's more parking elimination on St. Carlos Avenue because you're talking about going from pull-in to parallel. And then you're talking about eliminating parking on Arroyo on one block and on El Camino as well. So, I mean, are we talking 100 spots overall? I mean, what's the overall parking loss we're talking about when you add everything up? I mean, I get on the 600 and 800 blocks, we're going to be doing things, it's going to, we're going to lose that Wheeler Plaza parking. I'm fine with that. I think that should be more usable, flexible space, but I'm just trying to get an understanding of, you know, how much parking are we talking about losing?
I don't have that total number that includes El Camino Real and St. Carlos. St. Carlos is going to be similar to what I described on the 600 and 800 block because of the parklets that exist there now. So it'll be about, you know, a loss of about half of the spaces that currently exist there. I think the total loss in the downtown area is around 50 or 60, if I remember correctly. And...
But that's separate than Wheeler Plaza, right?
Separate from Wheeler Plaza, yeah.
Not counting the parklets, right?
Correct. Yeah, parklets are now...
What's there already? Yeah, what's there already is, I get, and just sort of more moving forward if we were to...
Yeah.
Okay. 50 to 60 spots. Okay. And then my next question is, I have more, some comments and questions, but oh, I guess on the 1200 block for St. Carlos Avenue, you have this L, but we have sort of a, you know, we have the Wheeler Plaza building, we have commercial there, we have commercial, we have the Samtrans building, which at some point will become something else, presumably. Why are we sort of stopping some, it sounds like you're stopping the design at just the 1100 block. Why are we not sort of going sort of the full amount on the 1200 block, given that it's such a tie-in from the Civic Center into the downtown core and as a gateway?
We are. So the 1200 block is a part of the plan. It has very similar treatment to the 1100 block. I think the L is more an expression that emphasizes the connection from the train station to Laurel Street. So we're just putting more emphasis on that 1100 block because of that, but the improvements would extend into the 1200 block.
I think it's a little confusing the way it's presented that way, because I think we want to be sort of welcoming in from all different directions into the downtown, not to be drawing people in from all spots. So I think we should think about how we talk about that, because that's, you know, if that's the case, pulling people in from the different areas. I guess, then my, I have other more comments and questions, but I guess this one may be for Lisa, or for Al, or Greg. I guess I'm just a little concerned about every, feel like every time we have this presentation, the completion date gets pushed out further. And now, this is, I believe, the first time it's because of the general plan. I want to understand why, because of the general plan, this has to happen. We keep, we changed, you know, the firm we're working with, and we just keep pushing things and pushing things, pushing things out, and it's, I think, frustrating. It's been, I don't understand why. And I don't understand why in the general, this has to be part of the general plan. So I would love to get an understanding of that, whether it's from a legal perspective or other perspective.
I'm going to turn it to Lisa for that, but if you're interested in the, sort of the response to the parking loss, I can talk about that a little bit. You know, what are we doing about that? And it involves the alleys, and involves other, some of the other parking blocks that we have, parking resources that we have, so I can talk a little bit about that later.
Happy to hear about that later. Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm with Greg. Should I start, and maybe you'll add more to that?
I'll add it if...
Okay. But essentially, and Greg, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason why we, these specific plans, and we're talking about the northeast specific plan and the downtown plan, need to follow the general plan update, because the general plan update is essentially a reset for the next 20 years. So instead of a completion year or horizon year of 2030, we're looking at a horizon year from 2025 to 2045. And with that general plan, it needs to consider all of the potential new development that could occur within that time. So it's a technical update to reset a capacity over the next 20 years. This is our horizon time. So we're taking into consideration the future build-out of the northeast, we're taking into consideration, you know, build-out of the downtown and of our existing arena cycle. Now I'm turning to housing, but our housing needs for the next eight years and the next eight years after that, and a portion of that future ninth arena cycle that we will have to address. So we're trying, we're essentially resetting everything. So the specific plans cannot precede that guiding, overarching guiding document. And at this point, the general plan reset is on a trajectory to kind of complete in May. If we can get it to go faster, we will, and we're looking at that right now. We're actually looking at all of the schedules for our long-range planning endeavors. I would say that I know the Council is interested in seeing completion and seeing things happen, and I think we're going to be able to have a conversation once we come back with phasing and cost and to talk about what's possible to do in the interim. We know this is a long-term plan, and not everything can be done overnight, but there are real ideas and opportunities that we can present to the Council along the way to actually see some, you know, exciting things happen. Greg, would you like to add anything to that in terms of the timing?
I just think one of the main things that we're going to need to look at and does always take time is the SEQA aspects of a big, large project like this. I mean, we have to be concerned about segmenting them, or do we want to have the SEQA cover everything? Because you might want to have SEQA cover the El Camino if you could, or it might cover the issues, and then we have to figure out how it integrates with our, either our future general plan or the existing general plan to bring it forward, and that just is a statutory process that we have to go through. I think next, if I saw the timeline, having a plan that we can look at next summer is what I thought I saw. Is it pretty fairly quickly, even though it doesn't seem that way? It is, it is...
That way?
Yeah.
At all?
So I think, I think the point I'm hearing from you, Councilman Rack, is that you really want us to move it as quickly as we can, and I think that's a message that we're hearing.
And I think it's a message that a number of us have expressed for quite some time. I guess what I don't understand is, I don't know that the question, so on the general plan, I get with the northeast plan, because we are talking about housing, job capacity, and a number of other things. We're not necessarily looking at that with this downtown plan. And I think prior to having the previous, when we had a previous consultant and we started this process earlier, we were looking at 2024 to finish. So I don't understand how, all of a sudden, now this is part of the general plan issue. And I guess, and SEQA is different than the general plan on this. So I'm just trying to understand why this has to fit in the general plan.
Well, I mean, I think the answer from my perspective, I think, is that in order to, if a general plan change is required, we're going to have to do SEQA for a general plan amendment. It doesn't mean that it's got to be, it varies on what level of SEQA we need to do. It just depends on how a plan develops, and once we have a project and we can see the foreseeable environmental effects from the plan that we need to study, then we can bring that forward to you. But, you know, just the way SEQA works is we can't bring, you can't make a decision until you've made the SEQA findings.
Greg, just to be clear, so are you saying that the reason we may want to include this as part of the general plan update is then the general plan SEQA would cover this development as well? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, there's the, I mean, this is maybe where I could get some help from staff, but the, this, we could have the, we can have the program, the program EIR or seek that level is different than the general plan level SEQA, and it just depends on how specific we are and what level of environmental review you're going to be able to do. So the more specific we get on the environmental plan, it's a project environmental document as opposed to a program document.
I would also add that it was always contemplated that the general plan reset, this very focused, capacity-oriented general plan, was always going to take into account the downtown and the northeast as part of, because these are parts of the city, and it needs to encompass both particular areas. And one of the reasons why they sort of, you know, well, I don't want to get into the specifics on the northeast. I mean, there is a little bit of a delay in that to get to the preferred land use scenario, but there is a lot of work that goes into coming out, to coming up with future build-out numbers or capacity numbers. We hired a consulting firm that does market forecasts so that we, so essentially, we're not just looking at the northeast geography and the downtown geography, but we also have to look at the remaining areas of the city and what we reasonably think could happen within the remaining areas of the city for this 20-year time horizon. And all of these numbers need to be reviewed and carefully analyzed and assessed so that they can come, so that the consultant, so we can come up with a proposal that embodies both the northeast and the downtown and the remainder of the city. So these things take a little bit of time, and they need to be coordinated. I definitely hear the Council, and this is not the first time staff has heard it, we are going to be actively working to, you know, kind of thread the needle on these plans together in a way where we can move them, you know, as quickly as possible. But they do interrelate with one another to some degree, so wherever there is opportunities to, you know, kind of shorten some turnaround times, some review periods for SEQA, we can't do that, but in other areas of the project schedules, we're actively looking at that. So rather than overpromise, we're a little bit underpromising on that, and when we come back with the technical analysis, we can, you know, provide counsel with more detail on exactly the remainder of the schedule, what's actually going to happen when, so that our, the expectations can be very clear. But at this point, we're definitely taking a look into the schedule to see where we can gain some time.
Lisa, just, so I get it. This is a very large, broad plan, a big, you know, section of our city, so in that sense, it make, you know, perhaps I get why it would have to be part of the general plan update. But there is an opportunity for us to define a phase, a limited Phase 1, and snap off some limited Phase 1 ahead of a general plan update, wouldn't there be? Because we could do a focused SEQA on something that's less than this big L-shaped area.
Well, that's something that we can talk about with the consultant team. There could be some additional costs, but if that's a trade-off that Council wants to do, we can see what's possible. But we'll have to talk it over internally.
All right. Councilmember Rack, I didn't mean to jump in, but did you have any other questions?
All the questions I have, I'm not sure I'm really happy with the answers I got, but I'll yield back my time for now. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Lisa and Jim. I guess I just want, you said three questions, Mr. Mayor?
We're doing reasonably well.
Two or three, okay.
You can do three, sure, sure.
I just wanted to follow up on this discussion, because I'm still, you know, when we looked at the timeline originally for this plan, and we've looked at it several times, there was no general plan reset marker in the timeline. I just, why wasn't this flagged for us earlier? And I also, I guess I'm just really struggling with this. We're talking like pavers and sidewalks and streets. We're not talking about jobs or housing, so I don't understand how that's related to the general plan when we're not building out capacity of the downtown. downtown. We're, we're making extensive cosmetic improvements, but is it because it relates to parking? I, you know, I, yeah, I'm still very confused.
I'll thank you for the question again. I'll, I'll try to put it maybe in a different way. Certainly with regards to growth, because we just recently adopted a housing element and got it certified, we know a certain level of growth anticipated for housing, but that goes to the year 2031. Our housing element cycle is from 2023 to 2031. And this plan is a plan that goes to a horizon year of 2045. So that additional growth does need to be accounted for. And the best place to kind of think of it as, you know, growth and, you know, basically, you know, setting the table for future development if the market brings it forward is through a comprehensive lens of the general plan. Certainly, we do look at that for the downtown plan in its own sub-geography, but it also needs to tie into this larger project, even though it's a smaller period of time, 2031 to 2045, that that potential growth does need to be factored into the equation.
It still doesn't have anything to do with pavers, though, and keeping Laurel Street closed. I don't, I don't, why, where is the linkage?
Well, we're also doing a specific plan, so it's in addition to the Streetscape Plan.
Let me speak a little because I, I hear what you're saying, and I think I understand where it's coming from, even though it's also news to me tonight to be hearing this. I think we're talking about two different sets of dates. I think what the council's most concerned about is the date at which you can put a project out to bid, because that's the moment where construction is going to happen on a fixed schedule. I think the land use elements of this and the CEQA elements of this are also important. And, and I don't think there's any way around untying them from the general plan because they are linked and they'll be linked through the CEQA process and another number of other processes. But as the community development director just whispered in my ear, and I agree completely, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think as we approach the end of this project and the, and what we heard last time we were in front of council in terms of speed it up, and believe me, that message has definitely been discussed and understood at the staff level, is we're trying to find ways to trim off elements of the project and we're reaching a critical phase now, which is that technical phase. And I recognize, shout out to a former council member here who, while on council, discussed significantly the, what was termed the money wheel, talking about the infrastructure underground. And until we get to that piece, which we're about to get to, it's going to be very difficult to select phasing because that's going to be critical to pricing, which will, I'm sure, be critical to your phasing. So that's where, that's where my focus is, and I think the significant focus of the staff, certainly our legal team wants to keep us honest in terms of having a plan that's defensible, particularly from a CEQA standpoint, when we consider that we're working in the downtown, we're going to be touching a lot of properties, a lot of property owners, a lot of businesses with a lot of potential areas for attack services. We want to make sure we get that land use process right and adopted, but we also want to make sure we get ourselves in the position where we can get those shovels in the ground the quickest. So I think the date that's been put in front of you as part of this presentation in terms of the plan adoption and the CEQA elements and those kinds of things are not going to actually push back our construction dates in any way. I think we're going to be able to have projects phased for you so that you're going to get the shovels in the ground at the earlier time. And I certainly regret that it was not really presented to you that way tonight.
Okay. I want to move on. Thank you, Jeff. That's helpful.
You bet.
I'd like to talk about San Carlos Avenue. And I'm looking at a couple of different slides, Crystal. If, I want to toggle kind of back and forth between slide 27 and slide, oh no, sorry, slide 29, please. So I'm looking at the new plan versus what was, what is there now? Could you go back to slide 28 too? So it appears to me that on the left hand side, we're going from an 11 foot sidewalk existing plus 12 feet of parklets. It's, and then to the new plan is a nine foot sidewalk and of course, no parklet. So it seems to me like the restaurant owners on the left hand side are actually losing out big time. And the way it was described tonight, it was that, oh, everybody's getting extended sidewalks, but that's not true. So could you walk me through that? And how, how are we ever going to explain to, you know, Cuisinette left, but Delizier and all of those restaurants, if that's that side, how they're, it's the other side? Okay. Well, then, I don't know. It just seems like it's, which side is that? Can you walk us through that decision process?
So left is north and right is south. There would be, if you advance the slide one, there would still be parallel parking, which could accommodate parklets in this. But I think, you know, we made a judgment, and I think it could certainly be debated, that the, the increase width wanted to favor the south edge, that that was going to be the, the more populated edge in terms of activity, in terms of businesses. And so the design is off center. And, you know, maybe it went a little too far off center, but we're, we're definitely phasing the south edge. And that has, you know, 18 feet. And the, you know, the north edge has, actually, it's more than 11, it's, it's 13 because the tree strip is paved, right? So you can, you can walk on that. So it's really that combined width, that's the effective sidewalk.
Okay, let me just, I'm going to jump in then. So on the south side, they're only, they're gaining three feet. So is that really enough?
Plus the, plus the parking if they wanted to.
Aren't we getting away from the parklets, though? Aren't we not going to be doing the closed?
Yeah, in most places, but maybe that's an exception.
For us?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that 14 feet enough to have two separate rows of tables? Like, could you have tables in between the trees and the four foot strip? Because just have, going from a, you know, 12 foot parklet to, you know, three additional feet on the sidewalk, it's not a lot of extra space for dining. So, you know, I'm trying to thread the needle here. So is that four foot tree strip? Is there room in there for tables as well?
Well, that's.
Crystal, could you go to slide 34? I think there's a good picture in that of, yeah, so see in the bottom middle sidewalk dining, they have the sidewalk, kind of the walking space in between the two tables. Is that possible along San Carlos Avenue?
Well, maybe. It's not the way that, that we're thinking of this. And, and, you know, maybe we need to rethink it. But we're trying to get the, all of the dining width against the storefront, and we're shooting for seven or eight feet.
That's a couple tables?
For outdoor dining, it's a couple tables.
Couple floor tops?
Yeah.
That's a huge loss, right? Especially for the restaurants on.
On the north side of San Carlos.
Well, no, I'm saying also on the south side, it's not a lot of space. The 14 feet is still, if we're pushing it up against the side of the restaurant, it's still just two or three, four tops.
Yeah, it's eight feet of, of tables and, you know, it's, we've looked at configurations of tables, putting them, you know, rectangular, perpendicular to the storefront. It's, you know, it's a common configuration that, you know, other cities have used. I see your point, you know, we'd love to have more space.
So I have one follow up question then.
Yeah.
So that, I'm thinking especially the block in between Laurel and El Camino on the south side. I counted today, there's only five parking spots because there's so many parklets. I think it's going to be incredibly difficult to parallel park, especially on that block, because people are flying down to make the light and get on El Camino. And no one's going to put their car in reverse and try and, you know, park, parallel park on that block.
Which, sorry, which street?
On the block of San Carlos Avenue in between Laurel and El Camino. So, you know, I take, I know that Councilmember Rack was talking about the loss of parking on Arroyo and Britton, but maybe that is a block that we study. Since there's only five parking spaces on the south side anyway, right now, we're kind of used to that. I just don't know that parallel parking there is even reasonable.
To just take that width and.
Take it out, no parking and, you know.
And devoted to the sidewalk, widen the sidewalk.
Maybe.
That would be nice. We could then recenter again because that might be a little more space than what's needed there. And we might want to give a little more to the north side. But yeah, that would be, I think that would be worth looking at.
Okay. I know that you're going to do a big study of parking. So I think that we just kind of need to think in real life, where are people actually, you know, going to feel safe, parallel parking?
Yeah.
And I don't know that San Carlos Avenue is one of those places. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I feel like I've asked a lot of questions, so I'll.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. No, I have some of those same questions. Crystal, if you could go to 39, and I'll just share that I had that exact concern in our subcommittee meeting on this. And I just want to observe here on Britton, the proposed turn lane is 10 feet wide. And Crystal, if you go to page 29, we're looking at a 16 foot turn lane here. So there, I think there's six feet of opportunity in this turn lane. I know we're thinking a greenway there. It's currently a nine foot median with a lot of green in it. So, you know, I think a much narrower turn lane and still leaving room, because the, the greenery goes, the trees go where there is not a turn lane. We have a top down on this as well. So anyway, I might support what you had just said, Vice Mayor, about maybe we don't want parking on the south side, and that would buy us a lot of space. But I just observe, I think we could get six feet out of this center median. Was there anything in particular? Because I think we shared that at subcommittee, so you must have looked at that a bit more. Jim, is there something really driving the 16 foot median there?
Yeah, it's, but we are looking at this again. What's driving it is keeping a refuge for the pedestrian crosswalk. So it's a 10 foot turn pocket, but then it's a six foot nose that comes out. So a pedestrian going across, if the, you know, if they, they miss the timer, they can stop in the center and have refuge. And that has to be six feet to achieve ADA requirements. However, we're reconsidering that because we can bring a bulb out, out into the parking lanes on either side and shorten the crossing distance and eliminate the need for a refuge because now we have a much shorter distance to cross. So we're looking at that as well.
And is that what's proposed on Britton? Because I would say that Britton crossing is a lot more harrowing than this crossing.
Well, Britton's also narrower. It's, it's very constrained. And so that's why we're thinking we could do without the refuge there. It's just a much narrower cross section.
Yeah. I just, I do share the concern about not having a good place for dining. And I think what I, on the north side here, I don't think we necessarily owe the restaurants the full width of their current parklets. Part, you know, the real justification for the parklets, if you recall, was outdoor dining while their inside dining was literally closed during the pandemic. So it was supposed to be a substitution for a large amount of space. And I, you know, I think we're aiming for something a little lighter, a little, little more open and a little more pedestrian friendly than perhaps what we've experienced with the parklets. So I just share that. But I don't think nine feet is enough. The tree strip, you mentioned that was permeable. So like four feet of tree strip, I mean, can we assume there'll be a good, like, what do you expect the distance between the trees are? And probably quite a few tables could fit in there as well?
About 40 feet, we think, center to center. And yeah, a row of tables could go in there. I'm, I think there may be a better solution. If you take the aggregate of all these comments, I think there might be a way to get increased sidewalk width on, on both sides. So I think these are great comments, and I think we need to go back and rework these, these dimensions.
Okay.
But I don't want to give up yet on the notion of having all the dining against the storefront. So I think what we need to do is work on making that width wider.
Okay, very good. Because I know on our north side, I think we might even just have one restaurant, that Tamari Georgian restaurant, that does have a parklet. I think we have a yogurt shop. But, you know, I think the general observation is, you know, I think we will continue to see retail space turn into restaurants. So I don't think we can assume that any of our downtown won't have a need for outdoor dining is an observation I carry. And then I'm also wondering, as I'm looking at this, if we have the parking protected bike lane, which I definitely support there. This has always been a very dangerous place for bikes, more so with the parklets. And I really like the idea of having the parking protected bike lanes, if that's feasible. Do we also buy that four feet of buffer then, if we've got parking protected bike lanes?
Which four feet of buffer?
You see the two foot buffer and two foot buffer on both sides? I'm wondering if that goes away if we've got the parking on the other side of the bike lane?
No, you still need a buffer between the bike lane and the, and the parked cars just for, you know, the door, the door swing space. So you do need a little buffer there.
I see.
So I think those dimensions are similar in the.
Even with a five foot bike lane, you, so you basically need a seven foot bike lane?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. Okay. And then I like how EDAC supported this kind of, or I guess I'd say organic element of the sway throughout our downtown. And, you know, I'm interested in that. But yet maintaining kind of the orderly nature, the promenade nature of the evenly spaced trees. So I, you know, I think that'll be quite nice. I'm not, are there examples of this sway out there? You know, are there any implications of that? I know you talked to public service about emergency vehicle access, but I'm just curious if, you know, has this been done elsewhere? Is this something you've seen?
Yes, it has been done elsewhere. We can, we can definitely show examples. There's a, there's a nice calming benefit, you know, car slow down, you know, because they're navigating something that's not just a straight shot. But yeah, we can, we can get some examples and show how that's been used in other places.
I'd love to just know the cities and, you know, maybe find a way to visit one or two. And man, you know, 10 years after they've done this, they still like their swaying streets.
Yep, great.
But in your experience, they're, they're still popular where, where they've been implemented? Okay.
They work really nicely.
Okay. And then I'm also wondering, to what extent are you looking for detailed input on like, say Wheeler Plaza? Because I think I've noticed there's some variation of Wheeler Plaza even amongst the visuals we've gotten in our packet here for tonight. Like, for example, I've seen with stage and without stage. And I'm just curious, are you looking, is that a decision point for us? Or?
Yeah, I mean, we're thinking with stage, we're thinking permanent stage, and this would be maybe the more formal stage between Wheeler and Harrington. Harrington would be something that's a little more of a multipurpose pavilion. It could be used for a stage, but it could also be used for other things. It could be used for a stage, but it could also be used for other things. But Wheeler would be the place where, you know, concerts are usually happening there, and that's set up for, you know, sort of serious music hookups and lighting and the different things that you need.
Okay. Yeah, no, I definitely support stage there. I know we've often had pop-up stages there, and I saw somewhere, I don't know if it was the vision, or, you know, we have a goal here of whatever we do accommodates all existing program offerings. And I really hope we continue to test that notion, because I personally feel like on the other side of this project, if we still feel the need for pop-up stages and bringing generators in, you know, we've done something wrong. So I really hope we kind of, as we iterate continuously, keep asking ourselves, you know, how will the Goblin Walk work? How will the Farmer's Market work? How will Arden Wine work? Because, you know, those are where we find ourselves bringing in a lot of temporary things, and I think they're important tests.
Yeah, and can I just briefly comment? The generators, totally agree, and the one thing I didn't talk about is a whole layer of infrastructure for this. Car charging, electrical outlets for, you know, food trucks and other vendors. So integrating those throughout, using light poles whenever possible to, for that additional infrastructure. But certainly the stages would be wired, the pavilion would be wired, so just getting all that infrastructure built into the design.
Terrific, yeah. Can't have too many outlets, right? I think we all learned that when we remodeled our house, so.
Yeah.
And also in Wheeler Plaza, I kind of saw, I think, a depiction with and a depiction without, kind of that less formal pop-up food, or maybe even retail in there. Are you looking for feedback on that? You know, I think I firmly support that. Is that in the?
Yeah, definitely. Feedback would be good. We're thinking more informal, you know, so this would be, maybe sometimes there's food trucks, but there is some permanent pop-up pods out there, but they're not all uniform. You know, it's sort of each little business owner can have a unique pop-up, and so it sort of creates something that's a little bit more informal. That's what we're thinking.
Got it. I appreciate that. And I guess my, well, you know, I'll save that for the next round, actually. Let's do one more, hopefully, quick round of questioning, and then we'll move on to public comment. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some general comments, but I think I'll hold those until we get into the, more of the discussion. I really only had one remaining question. When you were talking with Adam about the loss of parking places downtown, did I hear 15 or 16, or 50 or 60?
So, okay, let me talk about this. Would this be a good time to talk about our response to the loss of parking? Maybe just briefly?
Just wondering what the number was.
So 15 would be in one block, like in a 600 block, or in an 800 block. So I think the thing to keep in mind is that this project is going to be phased, so a number like 50 or 60 parking space losses is spread out over however long it takes to implement this entire project, which is going to take a while. I mean, maybe you can do one of these segments every couple of years. You know, there's, the community's going to have a certain level of tolerance for disruption, so you need to space them a little bit, but you still want to implement as fast as you can. So that's sort of the tension there. So in an initial phase, let's say it was the 600 block, you would lose 15 spaces. That's very much a manageable number of spaces, given all the other parking resources that are around. And part of the strategy that we're going to take a more detailed look in the parking analysis is, how do we make better use of your other parking resources? So the alleys, the Caltrain parking lot, Wheeler Plaza parking lot, especially the second level, that has some issues, but we think those could be improved, to be more navigatable, better lighting. And, you know, it's very underutilized up there. You know, people are uncomfortable going up there, so what can we do to make them comfortable? So things like that. We think that there's a lot of potential to activate parking resources around the, you know, around the core area, in the alleys and in these other places. So that needs to be part of the plan. How do we do that? How do we better organize parking in the alleys? How do we sign things better? How do we work something out in arrangement with Caltrans to, you know, to share that lot? Things like that. How do we work with Wheeler Plaza? So those things need to, with each phase of the project that you implement, those things need to go hand in hand, so you're always sort of mitigating any loss that you have.
And then my only other concern is, and maybe you can, you know, ameliorate my concerns over San Carlos Avenue, reducing it from four lanes to two lanes. That's such a heavily-used thoroughfare. I have a vision of backups to practically to prospect with, you know, the street being narrowed at Walnut all the way to El Camino, you know, one lane in each direction. I mean, everybody that, I mean, we had the DTA, we had planning, we had EDAC. Hear any other, any concerns from other people about that? How do I deal with that?
So it is, it is a good comment, and it's something that we are aware of. It's something that we're going to now look at very closely in the, in the traffic analysis. So if, you know, if this concept is generally going in the right direction, you guys endorse the task force plan, we're going to do a very detailed traffic flow analysis, and it's going to look at San Carlos Avenue and model that one lane in each direction, you know, with the turn pockets, and we're going to see, you know, what effect that has. It's also going to help us see how we can rely on other streets to absorb some of that. So, you know, some of that traffic might be deflected to other routes. So we're, and I don't know if you remember, earlier on in our press, we had sort of four network options. How do you rebalance the network?
Talked about one-way streets and all that stuff.
Yeah, those were some of the options we looked at. So that's all, the next step is to look at all that in much more detail, you know, with traffic modeling, and then just see what it tells us. You know, is that possible to narrow San Carlos Avenue? And, you know, and if so, what modifications might be needed to other, you know, parallel streets?
Okay. Thank you. I'll save my comments to our discussion.
All right, thank you, Ron. And I am just going to jump in one, Ron, on San Carlos Avenue and the angled parking. It was an observation in the subcommittee that it really doesn't function today as two lanes, because of the way cars tend to stick out in that angled parking. If you, like, I never felt safe riding in that right lane, and if you notice, cars usually jockey, so they're kind of cheating over. So I, you know, my observation is it's not particularly functional how it is, because of that angled parking, and maybe cars are longer now.
Yeah, I guess we'll, when they do the modeling, we'll, it'll give us a better feedback.
I would say that needs to be part of the existing modeling, is that that is a somewhat compromised lane, yeah. And then I do just want to clarify the parking question before we move on to other questions. So I heard that 50 to 60 number, but that's assuming no parklets. What I also heard was, with all the parklets that currently exist, we're talking about basically neutral, no net change in parking. Is that what I heard?
On the Laurel blocks.
On Laurel.
On the Laurel blocks.
Well, I think we might even gain parking on San Carlos, in that San Carlos is, on the south side, is completely parklitted right now. So I think it'd be a net gain on San Carlos, and it sounds like it'd be neutral on Laurel. I just want to make sure we all establish that.
And the 50 to 60 is, you know, full project build-out, and, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, that honestly is a scary number, but it's not accurate versus existing, because existing is a whole bunch of parklets that have chewed up at least that amount. So, okay, sorry. Councilmember Venkatesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, thank you for all your work on this and gauging all of our partners. I'm going back to San Carlos Avenue. There's actually five parking spots, correct? Are there about five?
On the, on the north side.
On the north side. I'm just wondering, because I know we discussed on the south side, I know we discussed, like, not making any parking there, and including our small businesses, and having more tables and chairs and things like that. Is that still a possibility, or do we need those five spaces?
I think that is a possibility, so I think that's something that we can look at. Yep.
All right.
That was my question.
Thank you, Pranita. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mayor Dugan. And just to clarify, we're going to make sort of comments later, is that the intention?
Yeah.
Questions now?
Such a deep topic. Let's finish this round of questions, public comment, and then perhaps we even go block by block to provide our input.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll hold off on that part of it. Jim, just had a couple, so on the 800 block, so there's a plaza idea, but that's sort of just, that's not a permanent, right? Is that just sort of for events, it's sort of like, would have different pavers? Or is the intention for that to be, that's not intended to be a permanent plaza, right?
It's, it's permanent in that it does have special paving, but it would only act as a fully-used plaza when the street is blocked off for festivals. So you could have central events on that block in the plaza, but when the street is open for cars, you circulate right through it.
No, and that makes sense. That's, I'm good with that. And then the, had two other questions. One, when you, assuming you talked about sort of the, and you'll, I guess, it sounds like you already, you'll look at one-way streets as an option when you do the study, so that's sort of, will be incorporated at some point to at least see if it makes sense.
Yeah.
And then looking at sort of accessible parking will come into play in terms of how we do that, what kind of requirements, how about that? And then for the, sort of the right, right pickup-drop-off, that would sort of be inclusive of ride-share, food delivery, sort of people just dropping people off, that we'd sort of, we're looking at putting spots in, more spots in for that kind of activity. Is that right?
Correct. So sort of two different categories. On the drop-off to the 700 block, which we think is going to be a big need, people are going to be dropped off at one end or the other, but also food deliveries, that might be a point where food deliveries might want to park, go in and then leave. So on the cross streets, we're providing drop-off zones on coming in both directions. Okay? So it's a little pull-off area where only, you know, very short-term drop-off is allowed, so, you know, no long-term parking. And then in other streets that have parallel parking, we're looking at those spaces as what we call multi-use curb lane. So it's a combination of different kinds of either pickup and drop-off, delivery space, it could be, you know, just regular parking for the public, it could be bike-share racks. So there's a lot of competition now for these curb spaces. So it's no longer something that you can just sort of dedicate it all to private parking. You have to kind of figure out what your need is, and then allocate it accordingly. So I think we would be looking at each block individually to kind of determine what the proper mix is. And then those, those uses can change over time. So the way that the city starts to manage those spaces, it's like, okay, now we need more spaces for, you know, Uber and Lyft pickup, so we need to take one or two more private parking spaces off. Or now we need another space for bike-share racks. So, you know, so those are, those are sort of evolving as use patterns change, but that's fine. You know, you can have that flexibility over time.
That's helpful. And then just, I don't need this answer today, but I would, you know, I agree with what the mayor mentioned about sort of the parking loss, and maybe the net isn't that big in certain areas. But I would, it would be really helpful to understand at some point, sort of before we move forward, sort of finally, putting it to a final plan, how much we're really talking about. Because I, but we are, because we're talking about sort of a pretty lengthy part along El Camino potentially, right? And all those businesses have parking there, and we're talking about eliminating all the parking on El Camino. And I'm just concerned about that, kind of, what we're talking about doing. I support making things more bike and pedestrian-friendly, but we have a lot of businesses in El Camino who are now, we're going to tell them there's no parking, according, as I understand the plan. And I'm just concerned about that impact on that.
Yeah, well, part of the parking study that we're going to go into more detail now is going to be detailed counts in all these areas, and then, you know, where's that parking made up for? So, yeah, I hear your question, and the El Camino concern is noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to have three sets, three questions about outdoor dining. That's going to be my theme here. How does outdoor dining work in the sway? I assume the sway is kind of a undulating piece of land. How does that?
Let's see, can we go back to one of the zoom-in plans of, I guess, the 700 block would be, would be fine.
Well, the 700 block, that's a separate, maybe the 600 or the 800 block, because the 700 is going to be closed.
Maybe page 25, or, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Or maybe page 25, the 600 block. A lot of action on that block. Thank you.
So the, the intent is that the widened sidewalk is maintained throughout. There, there's a little bit of indentation where, where the rain gardens are, so that, you know, this circulation space would narrow there a little bit. But the widened sidewalk goes all the way through on, on the storefront edge.
So what comprises the sway, then? The sway is separate from the sidewalk. Is it dirt?
Well, the sway is, the sway is only the roadway, right?
Okay, but I thought trees were coming out a little bit into.
Just the, just the groves. So the, the street trees are consistent. You know, those stay in the same alignment on both sides. The grove trees push out a little bit, but the sway is just the center portion. The sidewalk is continuous without a sway.
Okay, so I'm talking about the grove, then? Will outdoor dining fit in between trees and the grove?
Well, it could. So when we get into detailed design of the groves, we have to figure out what portion is sort of depressed rain garden, you know, that's all planting. Are there little, you know, patios that come out into those spaces? And I think there can be a combination of planting and usable space. But behind the grove, on the sidewalk, there will be space there for dining as well, between the grove and the storefront.
And would you, I guess that brings me to the 600. So slide 34, Crystal, could you go to, please, for talking about? On the 600 and 800 block, would we get dining, like, the sidewalk dining in the bottom-middle Would the sidewalk be wide enough to accommodate that?
The dining against the storefront, or the dining?
Both, on the 600 and 800 blocks.
Hmm, not the intent, not the current intent. But the grove could accommodate some pockets of this separate dining area. But that would be the only place where there's really space for it.
Okay.
Because the, where there's no grove, you know, it's, all the space is taken up with sidewalk, roadway, parking, sidewalk.
Okay. I guess when I envisioned us talking about widening the sidewalk, it would have been, you know, the benefit was to get, you know, more than just small tables up against the building. building. That's kind of what I had thought we were talking about when we were talking about widened sidewalks. And John, I take your point that, you know, during the pandemic, we were all eating outside, but it's something that our community has really fallen in love with. You'll frequently walk downtown and see everybody sitting outside and inside is empty because people prefer to eat outdoors. And so with this plan, it just makes me a little sad that we're really restricting back the outdoor dining that our community, you know, has been pushing for. Um, it was a big driver of doing this.
Well, let's, let's not be sad yet because we can, we can improve upon this. This plan is not cast in stone yet.
I'm just, I'm just telling you how I feel about them.
But also just a little bit of perspective is, um, you have very generous parklets right now because they're in the parallel, in the diagonal parking width, right? Most parklet cities are in a parallel parking width, which means that they're sort of restricted to eight feet. So that's sort of the standard that we've been working towards, and that's why we're saying if we can get eight feet along the building frontage, that's, you know, that's a, that's a good dimension for outdoor dining. And I think we could maybe improve upon that a little bit in this plan. What you're also making me think more about is, um, why not have tables between the trees? You know, and then if a restaurant needs a little bit more room, the big tables are against the storefront, but then there's a small row of tables between the trees and the, in the five-foot strip. So I think that's something that could, you know, that could work fine. And maybe flexibility of this use is something that we need to, to strive for.
Yeah, I just think we have to think about San Carlos and what we've all become used to, you know, because we'll hear about it. I wanted to mention to John that Charlottesville, Virginia is a really, has a beautiful pedestrian mall that has trees in the middle. It was established in 1976. It's quite old. It's gorgeous. So it's a good example.
It's, I think that's Charlottesville in the lower right.
It's on, um, yes, mhm. So in Charlottesville, and you can kind of see it, they're out, my next question, this is for the 700 block, their outdoor dining, um, is delineated with like wrought iron around the tables to kind of keep it, I don't know, just to kind of delineate the space. And I don't know if there's alcohol and beverage laws, you know, that restaurants have to deal with, but I assume that's something that's going to come next in the design phase is actually how that outdoor dining space looks and if it has to have barriers around it in the 700 block.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to look at the, you know, what is the requirement for barriers? One of the things that we're interested in is having, in the 700 block, having the ability for restaurants to take different amounts of area just according to their need because we've got a lot more width to work with there. Tables could come all the way out into the plaza. And so where that is more flexible and maybe more dynamic over time or different for each restaurant because they want different amounts, does every one of them need to be, um, you know, delineated by, by the protection? So we need to look at that and understand what those requirements are and then figure out how much flexibility we'll have.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is about Arroyo. Um, I forget which page that's on, but right now on Arroyo, Broiler Express has outdoor dining and it looks like, um, that would not be possible on this site. Where is Arroyo? So Arroyo has an interesting sidewalk, uh, construction plan of pedestrian plus bike. Are you conceiving any outdoor dining on Arroyo or no?
We're not thinking of outdoor dining.
Okay. Okay. And at some point, and maybe this is a question for Lisa, are we reaching out to each individual business? Is this plan is getting, you know, phased? Because these are some, these, these are kind of shocking changes to some businesses.
Yes, when we had our meeting with the business community, staff watched, walked each block within the downtown plan area and provided them with information. We had a meeting, so, so we have reached out to them and we have their addresses and names, so, yes.
Okay. I guess that continues though, because if Broiler Express is using their outdoor dining, it's, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you, Sarah. And, uh, no, I would share those general concerns about outdoor dining and, um, you know, that's obviously something we want to preserve through this plan and really think through. I think the, uh, Broiler has plenty of Laurel Street frontage too, so I'm sure they can figure something out. But, uh, Jim, I had asked you, the tree separation on San Carlos Avenue, is it also 40 feet down Laurel? I see him nodding yes. So I, you know, I view that as a lot of space and I think just in general, we're gonna think about anywhere between where cars can be and the front of these businesses as opportunities for dining with some trees in there too. So I think all, you know, I don't think we're going to have any dirt pathways or any, you know, unutilized space because I, I do think we really want our outdoor dining. Councilmember Venkatesh, final question or two?
Final question. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we love our trees and gardens in San Carlos. And so I just wanted to know the species that we're using, like some of the trees, what's the upkeep of it and the root systems and things like that? I'm sure you've used it in other areas and I just wanted to know the upkeep because I saw one of the trees was a purple tree and I have one of those in my backyard. It falls a lot, so I just wanted to be mindful of what we're using.
It's not, not fully determined yet. We still have some coordination to do with the, with the city's recommended tree list and maybe suggesting a few alternates to that. But I hear you. You know, root zone is really important and one thing that we're really trying to build into the plan is not, you know, little constricted growth areas, but continuous trenches where, where tree roots can really, you know, take hold and, and be stable.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, colleagues. Great, uh, sets of questions. I think we learned a lot. I'm looking forward to hearing from our public. Now would be the time to raise your hand, but we're gonna, we've been at this since 6:30, so we're gonna take a break till 9:25. So we're in recess till 9:25. Terrific. Uh, we will now move on to public comment for our downtown specific plan, uh, streetscape consideration. If you're on Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand. And Crystal, let's take the in-room public comment now.
Okay. We have, it looks like five at the moment for in-person. First up is Brian Perkins, and then you'll be followed by Amy Lynn Herman.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for taking public comment at this time. I've spent about 35 years advising elected officials on projects and things like that, and I wanted to share with you a couple of the lessons that I learned and some of the tears that I've shed over some of those projects. I would call tonight kind of the falling in love and dating phase of this plan. You're seeing all the beautiful things that are going to happen. And, um, I guess I would say, think ahead a little bit to the cutting ribbon phrase, uh, phase, which is also supposed to be a terrific moment, right? Except that it, and I've had this experience on numerous occasions, you're cutting the ribbon and you're saying to yourself, how come they're claiming that this is on time and on budget when I know otherwise? I mean, I know that the original time and the original budget were, you know, significantly different. So, you know, to Councilwoman Venkatesh's point, you know, what is the cost of it? You're about to get estimates from staff. They're going to do their best job right now. But what's also going to happen is the public is going to get anchored in the estimate. You know, it's going to come in at 20, 30, 40, whatever it is, and that's going to be the, the next door anchor for the project. And from that point on, you're going to have to argue back that changes or whatever that increase the cost are somehow rational, well-established on the rest of it. So communication, what isn't going to be built in to begin with, unless I'm mistaken, is a communications plan that is going to explain right up front. I would give you the example of Foster City Levy, which I was really deeply involved in. And it wasn't until there was construction equipment on the street and that the city hired, uh, an outside communications group to handle what came out, what turned out to be an overwhelming responsibility for city staff, which is just answering next-door questions all the time. So part of what staff needs to come up with is a very robust and likely very expensive communications plan for the city so that it doesn't fall on everybody else to sort of make do as time goes on. That would be my recommendation to begin with. And then second, one thing that drives me nuts is when someone says, well, yeah, we had this estimate, but we really didn't know what it was going to cost until you start to dig. I mean, if I could put an asterisk on every cost estimate I've ever seen for a public works project, that would be the cost estimate. We really didn't know what it would cost until, and it's simultaneously true and it just needs to be acknowledged upfront. And, and from an elected official's standpoint, you ought to be able to say, okay, but what happens if the utility placements aren't where we think they are? Now, we've got a better sense of what it was on the main parts that you're talking about because that was reconstructed recently. But the other parts, we really don't. And there will be other things that come up, code changes or, you know, standard changes and the rest of it. Those are the things that really start to flow, you know, throw people off. And then you, as councilmembers, are set, you know, standing there six years later saying, yeah, it really wasn't on time or on budget, or we didn't really go over $5 million. We actually went over $8 million or whatever the example is. It's nothing that staff does, it's just the way the process is set up, the expectations are anchored early on. And you just ask the question that's going to set the anchor. You know, what's this going to cost? So, um, good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Lynn Herman, you'll be followed by Arlie Lewis.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amy Lynn Herman. I am a public policeman making.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amy Lynn Herman. I am a public placemaking advocate. I've done work in a myriad of urban spaces, including New York City, Miami, Boulder, Colorado, across the peninsula. I work as currently direct events at a public venue in San Carlos, and have also done work as a creative placemaking artist in Miami at the largest street art festival in the United States that's ongoing. So I've both been on the implementation side as well as the program development side and care a lot about public placemaking as a tool for economic development. And I noticed in a lot of this conversation, we didn't talk a lot about the stakeholder involvement. And I think I would urge you to do a lot more of a deep dive into the benefits of engaging specific demographics of stakeholders effectively in the design thinking process. So just for example, I noticed there was a lot of conversation about curb cuts, fantastic accessible design. What about kids? What about school teachers? What about artists? What we are seeing right now in the United States is this issue of placelessness. So yes, there's a place, but nobody's there. Why is that? We should be investigating those kinds of conversations, investigating those kinds of issues with a much finer tooth comb. And I would suggest bringing in people who are creative placemaking experts, just to sort of give you a couple of penny tour of some nonprofit and NGOs. Project for Public Placemaking is a fantastic organization. They have a myriad of placemaking tools that are accessible for both people who are citizens as well as public officials. I would recommend going to the annual placemaking week that happens. I would also recommend just doing a tour of places that have had extensive redevelopment, places like Baltimore, and sort of addressing some of the equity issues in placemaking. So those are just some thoughts. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
Arlie Lewis, you're up next, and I believe you'll be followed by Barbara Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Dugan, Vice Mayor McDowell, Council, and City Manager Maltby. I am, I'm a biker, and I live a few blocks from City Hall here. And so I commute in all the manners that we've talked about tonight, by driving my car down San Carlos Avenue, by bike to Caltrain. And, but I'm also a part of San Carlos Bikes. And so we do all the bike parking at city events like Hometown Days, and we get to talk to a lot of bikers. And so mostly, I'm bringing good news tonight, which is, as we've looked at the plan and seen what people, seen what, what this plan would do for bike safety and pedestrian safety, it looks really good. So my basic message is to urge you to stay the course. This looks like a very good plan. It'll keep a lot of people safe. And when you keep people safe, you draw more people into the downtown area. So it's for business, it's a big win, too. And for placemaking, like she said, you just, the more people you draw in from all ages, because when you go to bikes and pedestrians feeling safe, you're talking about ages from five to, you know, five to 100, anybody can go, people who don't, no longer have their driver's license or don't have it yet. So, yeah, it looks like a really good plan. And as part of San Carlos Bikes, we're certainly help, you know, available to keep that communication going. So one of the things we've done is looked at the plan that was already, parts of the plan that we were able to see, and shared that with people who come to park bikes when we're doing Hometown Days. And we got really good response for it. So thanks very much.
Thank you, RJ, and appreciate all San Carlos Bikes does around town.
Barbara Anderson, and then you'll be followed by Nathan Conti.
Hi, I've lived here for 48 years, and I'm a pedestrian. And I'm not at all happy with this plan. Because if you take, for example, on San Carlos Avenue, if you take that down to two lanes instead of four, and I must have a smaller car than you do, Mr. Major, because, Mr. Mayor, because I do drive in the right lane, very happily. What happens? And so I walk from Wellington to San Carlos Avenue, I walk down San Carlos Avenue to Laurel Street. And I can tell you that every bottleneck, and there's a lot of bottlenecks now in San Carlos, and this will create another one, creates irate drivers. Irate drivers will kill a pedestrian turning right on red, because they just want to get turned. It's like, if you, if you try to cross San Car, if you try to cross San Carlos Avenue at the new Alameda, which is lovely, they will kill you turning right on red. It's, I can't tell you how bad it is. So if you create this bottleneck on San Carlos Avenue going into El Camino, you're actually going to make it worse for pedestrians. And I think you really have to look at that, because we turn right on red in California. And where you create bottlenecks, where you create problems like that, it's very dangerous for the, even though you've got the little green guy and everything lit up, it's very dangerous for pedestrians. I also want to say that I do drive out of, I do leave San Carlos sometimes, and I do so in my car. And the last thing I want is one more bottleneck on San Carlos Avenue when I'm trying to get to El Camino. It's, it just seems, why would we want to do that? People, and the last thing I wanted to say is, when I do drive here, which is either at night or because I'm going to pick up something heavy, I want those, the areas behind the restaurants and, and, you know, the, just the ground level areas, they're so poorly lit. They're so kind of dirty. And that's the way it is now. And it seems like you could start testing for more parking and more safe parking if you started to change that tomorrow. So that's my, but pedestrians don't like to get hit by cars.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate that. And 48 years certainly counts. So thank you. Nathan, I think you're up.
Nathan is the last speaker that I have in person, but if you have, if you'd like to make a comment, if you can raise your hand after Nathan.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, city staff, and everybody that's put so much effort into this plan. It's definitely very exciting. That's my perspective, setting up the next generation of this, this town to be, you know, have a better place than we have right now. So thank you for this. This is a great thing. I wanted to bring up a suggestion in regard to the 700 block and the seating outside of the, being adjacent to the building, that it's actually, what if we did a city-run tables and chairs with some sort of system to have a menu of a Taste of San Carlos? And it's, you know, all of the participating businesses can have their own menu. You can get creative and have, you know, delivery, paid delivery to your table. This, you know, citywide, I think would be really a neutral and, and a healthy free and fair market thing, not just basically based on, you know, what a restaurant's needs are based on their capacity, because they pay rent, you know, on their square footage and not for the public city space. So that's something that I think is good to bring up for the whole downtown. And that way, it makes it a more community-centered space and less based on what business it's in front of. And that way, the, everybody can enjoy and sit anywhere in town, whether it's a plaza or in the, or to the Grove, right? So that's my suggestion. And I think that would, I'm very confident that we could get a lot of other businesses to come alongside that idea and promote and support that as well. And I want to talk about a couple of other things, but it's crazy, two minutes goes by fast and you're having fun. So I guess I could just maybe talk offline. But thank you, guys, and yeah.
All right. Thank you, Nathan. And we talked about, I do like your idea of numbers on the tables or a QR code, so people can be at a city table and get dining delivered from one of our restaurants. I like that idea. Crystal, do we have any further public comment in the room, or are we online now?
Again, I do not have any more speaker slips for in-person, but I do have four hands up on Zoom at the moment.
Okay.
We'll take the, we'll take those four.
We've had the call for hands up for some time, so we will limit online comment to these four speakers.
First up is Giuliano Carlini. You'll be followed by Joe Famiani.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm a Bike Coalition Local Team Lead for San Carlos and Delma. I'm also on the TACAC, but I'm speaking only for myself. All I gotta say is, wow, this is an amazing plan. It shows vision, it shows leadership. I live in Delma, but I drive through and to San Carlos all the time on my bike. This is a plan for people to stop and use and recreate and live in San Carlos and not to drive through and go somewhere else. Cycling fits into this vision fantastically. It's less dangerous to have cyclists around pedestrians and folks recreating in cars. It helps folks to become healthier. It's better for kids, they can get around on their own. It's better for DEI, folks who can't drive, who are unable to drive, can, gives them another way to get around. And it's even better for businesses. There are a lot of studies that show that when you replace parking with active transport, with better sidewalks, with protected cycle lanes, revenues tend to go up. There are a few exceptions, heavy furniture stores, not so much, people don't tend to walk out with a sofa. But restaurants and small shops tend to do fantastically with these kinds of changes. I understand the concerns about irate drivers and things, but things like leading pedestrian indicators, bulb outs, shortening distances, tend to mitigate those a whole lot. So I really hope that you guys proceed with this. And I want to just thank you again for the vision and leadership. This is a fantastic plan. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. John Famiani, you're up next, and should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll be followed by Solomon.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I appreciate the openness of the City Council and its desire to get input from the public. I came in late to the presentation and am wondering about wheelchair users. And I didn't hear a whole lot about how someone in a wheelchair would be able to negotiate the downtown area in all the blocks. Further, getting downtown is a real issue. Parking for ADA issues is very hard to find and certainly not abundant. So I'm concerned, I guess, number one, about getting to the downtown and parking, and secondly, negotiating the entire complex that is just a wonderful plan. But I want to make sure that it becomes ADA accessible and that people with wheelchairs and some of our elderly citizens can negotiate the downtown easily. With regard to negotiating downtown, just two comments. One, when tables at parklets are on site of the building with a little space in between, and then in the parking space, it's very difficult to negotiate now in a wheelchair through that maze. And as much as I love to see menus and smell delicious food, it is very hard to negotiate. And with that, the alleys are awful to negotiate in a wheelchair, let alone drive. So I hope more attention is paid to the alleys in the future. So thanks again. Appreciate it. Bye now.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Jonathan. Well received. This is our conceptual level planning. ADA will absolutely be a strong component of our detailed planning, which would be the next step on any of these phases.
Okay. Solomon, you're up next, and you'll be followed by our last speaker, Lauren Obenshein.
Hi, good evening, Council. I'm Solomon Liu. I live in San Carlos, and I mostly get around by biking and walking. So, you know, overall, I'm pretty happy with this plan. I'm really happy to see more focus on active transport, lots of traffic coming. I'm not going to mention everything that's great about this plan, because it's just, there's, there's a lot that's great. I wanted to call attention to some details that might improve it even more. I think that, you know, details matter, and especially, and detail, one of the details that matters most is that the interactions between different modes of transport are, is like very, very thoroughly studied and considered. And that includes shortening crossing, crossing distances, you know, the corner rate, the corner radiuses of the corners. You know, a lot of the corners in town are like quite round and quite wide, and people take those at speed. Raised crosswalks, great for wheelchair users. Also, you know, also doubles as a speed bump. Signal timings, a lot of the signals are quite long in town. And that's kind of frustrating when you're not in a car. And I really like the idea, or the mention of the refuge island along Camino Real, oh, sorry, not El Camino, it's San Carlos, you know, that's definitely very, very sorely needed. And I think one final thing I'd like to mention is that, you know, a lot of time I feel like is spent talking about traffic and parking. And I, I'd like to remind the Council that, you know, induced demand is, goes both ways, and it's a well-studied phenomenon on that. People eventually get used to having less parking and, and, and less, fewer lanes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Solomon. Appreciate the comments.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Lauren Obenshein.
Hi there. Thank you so much for taking my comment. My name is Lauren Obenshein, and I am a resident here in San Carlos. I have lived on the peninsula most of my life, and I'm also the mom of two kids that are under three years of age. So I'm speaking tonight, strongly urge you guys to support a bikeable downtown. And one of the main things I really like about this plan is fully implementing protected bike lanes. By making it safer to bike downtown, you will reduce congestion and make it easier for people to park for those who drive. So I'm really committed to reducing my carbon footprint and patronizing our local businesses downtown and in East San Carlos. However, with two young, small children, it is unsafe for me to bike on streets that don't have protected bike infrastructure. So I really liked in the plan that they, you had parking or tree-protected bike lanes for San Carlos Avenue. And I like the proposed options for Britton Avenue and Royal Avenue with the trees uses barriers, because they really act as a physical barrier between cyclists and the moving automobiles. I also strongly urge you to add a physical barrier between cyclists and traveling automobiles on El Camino Real, in addition to the proposed buffer. I don't think I saw that, but I know people drive pretty quickly on El Camino Real. In referring to the bike network map, I strongly encourage you to support protected bike lanes on at least one of the streets that connect downtown with residential neighborhoods. I know right now, there are a lot of sharos, and they're a bit nerve-wracking with two small children. You know, we could look at northern, the northern part of Laurel Street or even Elm. So thanks again for your commitment to a safe and inclusive downtown. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Lauren. I appreciate that. And that's our final public comment. I appreciate all the input from our community. So what I propose we do now is, let's flip through the slides together. Crystal, can you go to slide 25? And I mean, what we're trying to do, you know, we're, I believe, moving forward with the concept plan, but we want to provide all of our thoughts and input, because this is still evolving and then moving to detail. So I would propose we flip through these various slides, see if, you know, and chime in, we don't have to be too formal here, get all our ideas out there, see what we have consensus on. And then we can do a final round at the end with any additional comments or wrap-up that anyone feels like they have. So Councilmember Rack, you want to get us going?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I think I have for two comments, just generally on the 600-block concept is, I would echo what the Vice Mayor talked about. would echo what the Vice Mayor talked about in terms of trying to get as much outdoor dining as we can in there. I think it's important. I feel like it's something that the community has embraced, and we should do more of that. So, that would be sort of the, I like the concept, I just want to see more of the outdoor dining. And then on the plaza is kind of where I have sort of the strongest opinions. I am certainly supportive of having a permanent stage and having things sort of done correctly so we're not dealing with generators and other stuff, as the mayor pointed out. I, I really don't like the idea of having like food trucks and that kind of flexible space. I would, I would rather have shipping containers there that have spots that are used. There's a lot of examples of that in the Bay Area and other places that are more permanent, that we can rotate restaurants, rotate different coffee shops or other things in there, highlight some of the local businesses, and then I would, I think we should have more tables and chairs there. I almost think this is a good spot, while it's flexible, to have sort of like a, I'm going to say sort of beer garden kind of atmosphere, but some longer tables to, to have dining, because I think one of the things we've heard from the community is that there's not enough outdoor seating spaces for people to get takeout. They, they love the restaurants, but there's not enough to just get takeout and do things. And I think as part of that, and I don't mean, when I say beer garden, I don't mean this with kids, but I do feel like having live music and food and other things that are in a consistent space draws more families, draws more younger kids in. I know for, for my kids, a lot of times they would go out of San Carlos because there was nothing to do in town, right, in the evenings, right? You can get dinner or do something, but, you know, they'd go to Palo Alto because there was, or Redwood City because there's a movie theater, or there's later, place coffee shops open later, or other things. So I think to have some sort of entertainment and a draw for teenagers and for youth and families is something that we should really leverage that space for in a more permanent, permanent way.
Great, thank you, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to talk about the plaza, too. I, I'm not a fan of the permanent stage. I don't, I think that our Wheeler Plaza neighbors are going to get real frustrated with loud music being right there next to them. I also am not a fan of, sorry, guys, of the food trucks or the storage containers. No one has said to me that San Carlos has a lack of dining. In fact, I, one of the committees mentioned that downtown San Carlos is, quote, "overextended" to the restaurants and needs to consider other active uses and programs to activate its public realm. And I think we're so fortunate to have this plaza, which is level and flat. Both the Youth Advisory Council and the Downtown Advisory Committee hit on the issue of needing active programming. Both mentioned roller and ice skating rinks. The YAC also mentioned mini golf. This is something that I hit on at our last meeting, too. You know, you can put out a synthetic rink in the winter, you can do a mini ice skate, mini roller skating or putt, you know, portable putt-putt. I would love to see the business owners who are currently surrounding that space have the opportunity to do tenant improvements and do doors opening up. We, that's already surrounded by Paris Baguette, Nathan's Coffee Shop, there's a pizza place there. I think it would be lovely if they were able to open up their space and use that as their outdoor dining, and then have, you know, really activate this use to give people a reason, another reason to come downtown because, you know, oh, let's go to the December, you know, ice skating rink, or let's go, it's Mother's Day, let's go play mini golf. That's what my family did, and we had to drive all the way to San Francisco. I think that we hear from our retailers and our business owners that we're, you know, we need to constantly be creative and think big, think of reasons why people are going to come downtown. So I would like us to think more creatively about using that space. I support music at Harrington Park, I think that's more central, it's a more natural place to have live music. But I would really like to see this space used as a rotating seasonal active place to activate our downtown. That's what I'm going to say about that block, because I've already talked about outdoor dining. Thank you.
All right. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to agree more with Sarah on a lot of these things. I picture particularly this focusing, since we are on the plaza, the rest of the street, I think, I like the, the general breakup in the traffic, but with respect to the plaza, I see it more as a, of a, sort of a, potentially a quiet area, tables shaded, shaded, not enclosures, but covers. I would like to see it flexible so that it can be changed, it can, things can be moved, eliminated, if you want to have, you know, I hadn't thought of a skating rink, but if you want to put one in, or, or a temporary concert venue, I probably shouldn't use the word concert, but a band, temporary bandstand. I think, I like the minimalist approach because it gives everybody the most opportunity for flexibility. We can change it anytime we want, it wouldn't be a lot of expense. Originally, the design was supposed to be a fountain, and it was supposed to be a lot of stepped concrete and, and a gathering place for people. I think we can still do that, not that we have a fountain or anything, but, because I think that's enormously expensive. But I think we should think of it more as a, as an area that can be changed whenever we want to accommodate whatever we want. And I think I've, yeah, that's all my comments for the moment.
Yeah, Pranita?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just want to hear from the businesses over there, like Paris Baguette, and see what they envision being there, since they're the heart of that area, they see what's coming, what's going. So I think I would just engage those businesses and get their opinion.
Yeah, thank you. We've, lot of engagement in this area as well, and I agree with most of what everyone has said in this block. Really do want to make sure, whatever we do, all the way down Laurel, we're really optimizing our outdoor dining, because we certainly know our community likes that. And if there is a reduction from the currently large parklets to what we're doing here, we do need to be mindful of that, and, you know, and that's an argument to really, you know, make sure we're not giving up space that we don't have to, like, you know, between the trees should be open for dining and things like that, in my opinion. For the Wheeler Plaza, I don't think it's one or the other. This is showing a permanent stage, but it's also calling it in this concept, multi-use, and so I think we can do both. I think there should be a stage there, because we put a stage there every time we have one of our big festivals, or we usually do, or elsewhere. There's always a need for more than one stage when we're doing our celebrations down there. So I do feel like we, you know, a permanent place, I really, we should get out of the business of pop-up stuff if we're going to take this level of planning. And I think that leaves space for mini golf or seasonal, you know, I think what Redwood City's done in Courthouse Square is quite nice. They do a lot of different seasonal things there, pop-up things there. And they also have pop-up retail, in a way. Those little hut things are pretty temporary, you see smaller businesses come and go. So that's what I think's being depicted on the right-hand side here of that Harrington Park, is kind of lighter dining, or, and it doesn't just have to be dining, that can be retail as well. I think the idea is it's kind of like month-to-month leasing in a less permanent type space, and whether it's a container or a booth-type situation, I think we can be very creative there and have something interesting. I do like the idea of public dining tables available, and Nathan, one of the business owners right there, the idea of tables with QR codes that restaurants can come and deliver to you while you're in a public space, I think that's a really cool idea. Certainly easier for the restaurants than a DoorDash somewhere. And, and then, and a really interesting idea that I had heard from our community foundation, I walked this with some of that leadership, and, you know, as we talk about our Centennial Plaza and kind of the European-centric nature of that suggestion was had, boy, you know, we have a growing Asian population, is that going to get celebrated here as well? I think this square really does lend itself to perhaps an Asian flair that would balance what else we're doing down there that might have a bit of a European flair. That is our, our sister city lane right there, and our celebration of our relationship with Omura Japan is right there. And Jessica of our community foundation even suggested that kind of pop-up dining is reminiscent of what you do see in Asian restaurants, that really do build outdoor-activated spaces. So I like the idea of that perhaps having an Asian flair. I wonder if my colleagues have a reaction to that. And all that might be putting pressure on, you know, I think there's a naming opportunity here as well. You know, I think the condos are Wheeler Plaza, so I don't think we have to call this thing Wheeler Plaza. I've heard maybe we have to call it Girlstone Plaza, I kind of hope that's not the case, but we should do something there that helps establish the sense of place. That's what I have. Any more comments on 600-block, Council Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. I think, is that enough feedback on the 600-block? I see thumbs up. Let's move on to the page 26. And we can move faster on some of these, I think. Crystal, can we move ahead one? There we are. So looking at Laurel Street, we've got the sidewalks, oh, this is existing, I'm sorry, one more. Yeah, there we are. And I think the, this plan seems to really accommodate that large dining room, almost 20 feet on each side, if you count the tree strip lane. Are there any other reactions to this elevation of Laurel Street? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't, yeah, I'm, I, I just would want to confirm that areas around the tree strip could accommodate some dining. That would be the, I think, one of the questions, just because we, to me, it's unclear whether that is extra space or not to use, because I do think 14 and a half feet is not that much bigger than what we have now. So I just would want to check on that.
Okay, I think that's valid. Any other thoughts or input on this elevation? All right, we can move on then to, let's go to San Carlos Avenue, page 29, the next page? Oh, yeah, there we are. And I heard some consensus that, boy, we really don't want to give up outdoor dining on our north side, and perhaps 13 feet's not enough. I had suggested maybe we start looking at trimming that turn lane, and, and also we're deciding about flipping the parking and the bike lanes, so the bike lanes become protected, which I understand is a popular idea with the bikers, but it can also create more conflict with pedestrians who are waiting to cross. So do we have any opinions on this? Councilman, Vice Mayor McDowell, why don't you go first on this one?
I'll just add that I had talked about looking into not doing parallel parking on the block, and it sounds like that was going to be studied, so just to put a pin in that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good thought, and I think it's worth studying, because I think, like you, thank you for your field survey today, Sarah, and there's five spaces, and I think, you know, what would that be? 18, 26-foot-wide dining area would be pretty amazing there. So I think that's definitely something for us to think about. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just add in, I think the, to me, I think we should look at, if we can, you know, we just heard from all the bike people, but add a, make sure we have, with the traffic flow, there is enough to have two lanes that travel in each way, which could mean keeping the, I would like to keep the buffered bike lane, move it closer to the sidewalk, maybe, to your point, on the median turn lane, reduce that and eliminate parking at least on one side, maybe on both sides, to be able to accommodate that. I just think over there, the traffic, that's a main artery, and to, to do that kind of road diet there, I think is going to be, is going to be a problem. But I think, I think we could accommodate all that by potentially eliminating the parking there and doing that, and then maybe, might meet all the criteria.
I will point out that the turn lane is additional capacity on this street that we don't currently have. So right now, we have four lanes, this is basically three lanes, because people are always making that left turn, right? And that's, that is conflicting the flow. So I don't think we're going from four to two, I think we're kind of going from four to three here because of the turn lanes and how those are used.
I think that's right. I think the northbound, though, we're, and that may be okay, northbound, I mean, westbound, excuse me, that that might be okay.
Westbound, yeah.
Might be okay, one lane. I just think the traffic's, so we should look, and if it's, I think we should try to be as flexible and creative as we can in this space to have the buffered bike lane, move it closer to sidewalk dining, try to expand that, and, I mean, this is one of the wider streets we have, so the, the more we can do with that, I think is.
Yeah, fair enough. I would just point, I think even going west, you're still making a left, you still have a turn lane there to make a left into Laurel, so, you know, that's what's nice about the turn lane, it actually increases capacity in both directions. Councilmember Cullens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I'll need to be convinced by whatever studies are done, because I'm still not a fan of one lane in each direction. And if we're going to do that, I, I think we ought to look at just eliminating that, that median strip altogether. We're going to have a lot of, you know, plants everywhere, trees and everything, but that's, there's so much, we're trying to cram so many things in there that I don't know that it, we need to have a, you know, what is it, a four-foot or five-foot-wide median strip there now? And I hate to bring up the past, but when I was a kid, there was no, there was no median strip. It was four lanes, and you could literally, it wasn't advised, but you could literally walk straight across the street. You know, we can still beautify it, I'm just not sure that the median strip is something that we need to look, that we need to keep. I would be probably more amenable to, to two lanes and a turning lane if we didn't have a median strip, but maybe that's probably the best way to say it. Thank you.
Got it. Yeah, thank you, Ron. And I, you know, that could be a 10-foot turn lane, like, is being proposed on Britton, I suppose, so we could buy six feet with that. Okay, is that enough input on, on this one? All right, very good. Moving on. Yeah, here's a fun one. Who wants to go first? Should we start on the left?
I'm just staring at it. No, I, I don't really have any big comments, except that, you know, it looks, the way it's designed, it shows a curving street, but it shows a curving street that's never going to have any traffic, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering about that, unless those, those green areas are just, you know, what are they, lawn, or, or what are they? You know, those, those curves, there's two on the, on the left and two on the right, I don't know what those are. Other than those things, I, I don't really have a problem with it. I like the idea of a fountain, I like the, you know, the stage in Harrington Park. I wouldn't make, I wouldn't suggest any other alterations. I don't want to be labor of the issue, so.
All right, thank you, Ron. Councilmember Rack?
I think we'll go from side to side, I guess. I guess the one thing I would say, and I, because I wanted to a little bit jump back on what the Vice Mayor mentioned about sort of the other plaza there, I, you know, we, this place, this could also be a place where things like mini golf could be, like at, they're not at Palisades, where they have it, sort of, it's more linear, where you kind of walk around, so it's sort of a, not just this sort of a condensed thing, you can, you walk from place to place, you get to see some of the things around in the neighborhood, in the, in the block. So things like that could be in there, sort of temporary movable kind of things. And I do think like, we, doesn't mean that we couldn't, in the wintertime, when you're not going to necessarily have concerts because it's raining or stuff, you could have the ice rink in, in the wintertime on the other, on the 600-block, on Wheeler Plaza, right? Because you're not going to have any, so many people sitting outside, and then you could put the mini golf here and have just a lot of flexibility around that. But I think in general, the concept I'm, I'm good with, I, I think it's a nice, nice design, and I think it's, you know, look forward to kind of, as we sort of get... of, as we sort of get to more specifics around it.
Great. Thank you, Adam. Pernita?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Surprised nobody asked for pickleball. But I think you've heard us, we want more outdoor dining in between the trees. I'm going to trust that you're listening to what we said before and come back with a better, and, you know, it's a work in progress, I know.
All right. Thank you, Pernita. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just chime in that I do like the central fountain and pavilion. I like how that has been brought forward, and I like that it's a more flexible space, that you could have an audience in front or an audience in back. There's no really back or front. You could sit in either way. So I think that's, that's a smart design. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just add on to that, I'm really enthusiastic that we're pulling that stage out of Harrington Park and making it visible. And I would just point out, though, that maybe we even want to pull it more into the central plaza. Just, we really should think of the sightlines, because we have festivals down there with hundreds and hundreds of people. I mean, the Goblin Walk, like a couple thousand. And we try to launch that stuff at a stage, so, you know, that's, if you look at those hard corners there on either side, you know, think about the sightlines and where you can stand in the plaza and still see the stage. So it makes me want to pull that into the plaza a little bit more, like maybe at least a full third, if not a half, of, of that stage into the plaza. And there's still plenty of room for emergency vehicles then. And that would make the water feature a little more prominent in the plaza as well. But besides that, I really love what we're doing there. I love the idea of it being kind of a real center-focused statement piece there with public art. And I would just say, and global comment, we have decided, we've, we've made this decision that this is Centennial Plaza, so we should get out of the central plaza business and just start calling this thing Centennial Plaza wherever it comes up. And, and then I would just notice that, I mean, we've got, and this is probably when we get to the detailed design, but I'm expecting, you know, in this three-block area, at least three dozen perhaps opportunities for public art. I mean, we really should start thinking, where are the places that we see public art fitting in with everything else that we're talking about, so that we can get other folks in our community engaged on what that process might look like? Because I, I think the real opportunity here is just more community engagement and not, you know, us buying municipal art pieces out of a catalog or something. And I think the earlier we start to identify where those can be, the better. Yeah, that's, those, that's my input. Any final thoughts on this one? Councilmember Venkatesh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment, it was Mayor Dugan who thought of the stage in the pavilion during one of our committee meetings, so just wanted to give a little shout out.
Oh, thank you, Pernita. Yeah. The, I just, I can't wait to attend an event down in the central plaza. I mean, it's going to be just a really cool space. All right. Moving on. Great. 800 block. Anyone want to go first? This feels like a lot of what we have already said. We might not have further comment here.
I just had one.
Sure thing.
I just had one question. Can you just explain the alternating parallel parking?
On the left, you see it's on the, it's on the top side of the road, and on the right, it's on the bottom side of the road. So there's always only parking on one side of the road, and then that's why you snake over.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Very good. I do think it's worth looking at these other streets briefly, so slide 36. I'm sorry, 37. Yeah, for proposed. Thank you. So this is Arroyo, and no street dining. I heard the vice mayor on the concern for the broiler, they are on a corner and probably can get configured on Laurel would be my off-the-cuff reaction, but we should certainly talk to them about that. Councilmember Rack? Thank you.
I just had one, just kind of question, just if we can look at when we do this, because we're, we've talked about taking the parking away here on Arroyo, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, but did we look at on Olive on that same block? I mean, I, I guess this, because the Arroyo one, like where that tunnel is, it's not, I don't think it's exactly lined up, so it doesn't, you know, is there, I'm just trying to think where there's businesses, where there's not, what might be better or not? I'm just curious if we looked at that as an option.
All the other cross streets, Olive included, they, they're wider, and we've retained parallel parking on those. Arroyo, it does align with the tunnel. It is a pretty direct connection, so we're really seeing that as a gateway segment, you know, between the tunnel and Laurel Street. So that's why we had this combined, you know, multipurpose bike and pedestrian, just to make that connection stronger.
Okay. And I guess I would just then, I would say, just as we think through the sort of bikeability and walkability, we sort of, just in general in that area, we don't think about just coming from the east side, that we think about coming from the west side, how we sort of ensure that that's more as pedestrian-friendly, whether that's on Arroyo, it's on Olive, if it's on Cherry, wherever that is. So there is a way that people feel like there's, this is the safe route to go to bike from, because you're going to have way more people in the evenings coming from that side.
Yeah.
So that just would be my point on, on that in general.
And Jim, I would just jump in with a question. If we're, if we're concluding we're not going to have outdoor parking here, would it make sense to put the tree strip on the other side of the bike lane and have a protected bike lane there?
We did look at that. It, it actually can obstruct the bikes a little bit, and this way it gives it, the trees help separate the pedestrian zone from the bike lane. So we kind of looked at it both ways, and this, this seemed to work a little bit better, so this is where we ended up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I make my comment, I just want to know, there's parking on Arroyo on both sides right now. Jim, how many parking spaces would be eliminated by this design on that block? We're talking about from Laurel to El Camino, right?
Yeah, just that one block. I'd have to go back to the, one of the planned views, but I think it's maybe five on each side, something like that.
I know that's not very many. I'm just not a fan of that. I mean, I, I could see eliminating parking on one side, but parking down there is already challenged. I go down there for lunch a lot, and it's, you know, trying to find a place to, to park, either park behind beankinis, which is often full, or you go out into the neighborhood. I, I'll just go on record as I'm not a fan of eliminating all the parking on that block of Arroyo.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Ron. And I'll just say, I paused as well, thinking about parking there and giving it up. I've come around to embrace the gateway thought, that this is really what is going to tie our downtown to the east side and try to bring pedestrians and bikers out from the life science on the east side into our downtown without getting in their car. And obviously, each one of those trips that is not in a car won't need parking. So I like the idea of encouraging that. But I hear you. You know, we definitely have to be mindful of parking throughout our downtown. All right. See no other comments on this one? Why don't we take a look at, yeah, Britton. Very good. So here's our 10-foot turn lane in the middle, and arguably, we could do something similar to San Carlos Avenue. And again, that really does function as a third lane, because when someone's making a left on these streets, it really does basically end the flow of that, of that lane. So this, I view this as three lanes, really. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, so is this looking east or west? Which way is this looking on this one?
It's symmetrical.
It's like it's looking west to me, right? Based on the way they're biking and walking? Is that right?
I think it, I think this works both ways.
Yeah, it's symmetrical.
Okay. So I guess the question that I have, if you're going west, if you're coming across El Camino, there's two lanes and a turn lane. And now are you, because it looks to me like then you've only got one lane here. So you're going to have two lanes going across El Camino, having to condense to one lane. How do you do that with, from a traffic standpoint? We're going to have to reconfigure industrial at that point? I mean, it's, Britton all the way back?
Going west.
So if you're going west on, on Britton Avenue.
Yeah.
And you cross from the freeway, you cross under El Camino, there are two lanes and a turn lane.
Two lanes in each direction.
In each direction. And, and though going west, there's two lanes, and it, and there's two lanes, excuse me, right, there's two lanes. One has a turn, either straight or turn, and then it, it merges in on the other side of El Camino.
Yes.
So, but what I see with this is potentially, unless I, that's why I'm asking the configuration of this, you're going to go from crossing El Camino with two cars and then going to one car across the intersection. How do you, I don't, that doesn't seem safe to me at all. But maybe I'm misunderstanding this, because you've got two lanes, and then you want to condense within the intersection to one lane.
Okay. My understanding is that from the, the east side of the railroad crossing, coming across, one of the, one of the lanes goes straight and the other one turns right, so the, to the straight lane.
From the, there's two lanes that cross.
Straight.
That go straight.
Two lanes that are going straight.
And I think there's actually is a turn, and there's a turn lane as well. There's three lanes there. There's a turn lane and two straight lanes.
Because at some point...
There's at least two straight lanes, because it's configured to, it's configured to two lanes right now, because you, when you cross the, cross El Camino, there's two lanes there.
Okay.
So it's, they merge by the gas station inside, once you're, once you're across El Camino, they merge.
But there's two.
Right. But I'm saying if you're going across the street, you have to now, under this plan, as I see this, you have to merge in the intersection in El Camino, unless you're going to reconfigure all the way back on, on Britton Avenue, which to me creates problems.
So, yeah.
I think this, this plan needs to be re-looked at.
Yeah. Where's the merge happen?
Because I don't, I guess you don't want to merge, you don't want to merge in the intersection.
Yeah. Okay. Noted.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Adam. And before we continue, can I just take a, get a motion to extend the meeting?
I moved to extend the meeting till 11:30.
I was hoping midnight.
We can do midnight, fine. Until midnight.
Because otherwise, I'll make a motion to extend it till midnight.
Is there a second on midnight?
Yes, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. All right. We're extended till midnight. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. Comparing the line of trees on this slide for Britton to the line of trees on Arroyo, on Arroyo, the line of trees separates the bikers from the pedestrians, but on Britton, the bikers and pedestrians are side by side. What was the reasoning behind that? Because I, I do think that that's, is there a, is that a barrier in between where the pedestrians are walking and the bikes? Yes. So for the public record, I don't know if they can see you nodding your head, so yes, there is a, what is that, a fence?
It's more the, you know, just.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Vertical barriers.
I see. And why, why aren't you using the tree, the lines of trees, like is used on Arroyo?
I, I'm, I'm not sure if it was because there's lighting that's, that's combined with the trees here, and on Arroyo, we didn't have lighting in the same place, so we're using the, you know, just that opportunity to put everything in that alignment. Which one do you like better?
Yeah, I don't know. I would have to see what that barrier looks like.
I think it might have had to do with building setbacks and clearance for the trees, as I'm looking at the two, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And just a note for future slides, I think it would be really helpful to write Britton Avenue which block we're talking about, so that the public doesn't think we're doing this all along Britton, you know, throughout the whole city. Same with Arroyo. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Any more thoughts on Britton Avenue? Great. I think that is, we have El Camino to look at, so slide 41. And this one's a lot to think about. It will not be phase one, and we'll have to cycle this with Caltrans, so I think we'll have plenty of opportunities for further input on this. But any thoughts here? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just concerned about sort of the, the main thing for me is the loss of parking over there, because you've got so many businesses on the west side of El Camino there that I just think it's problematic to, to lose all that parking for three blocks or more. And I don't know how far this goes down. Is this intended to go down just through the, through Arroyo? Is this intended to go down further than that? What is the length of the proposal for this?
To Britton, at least. And then south of, south of Britton, to be determined.
Now we're talking potentially like hundreds of parking spots for people. So I'm, I would say I'm really concerned about how this is shaping up on that. So I'll just leave it at, I think, I think we need to rethink El Camino altogether, given how much, how many businesses and how much parking we have of loss over there.
Any other thoughts? Ron?
Just thinking about what Adam just said. One possible redesign is, is to, I agree, leave the parking in, but also design it such that the parking could be eliminated in the future, because many, many years from now, there may not be a lot of businesses along El Camino. Maybe a lot of it may be housing that's going to have off-street parking. So if there's a way to design it so that the parking can be eliminated at some point without too much structural change, that might be a way of thinking about the long term, but also accommodating the short term.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. I'll just chime in to say that, at least in this downtown core section, I will always fight hard for first-floor retail, even if it is apartments over. So I think the parking concern is, is valid here. I always have thought of El Camino as the perfect area for parking protected bike lanes, and this is our very widest street, and it just seems to me we ought to, and I'm not sure why this tree line seems different. It's a soil strip. Maybe that's for runoff and some other thinking, but, you know, I think we need parking at least on the business side, and maybe it's, instead of a five-foot buffer, it's, you know, an eight-foot parking, and it becomes parking protected bike lane. I don't think we give up too much there. I think the median in the middle as a refuge is pretty vital on that street. We've had fatalities even recently from folks crossing El Camino. And then I would just say, I think we will have restaurants there, and I don't know why we wouldn't want to allow outdoor dining on the sidewalk on the west side. So, you know, there's too much math to be done here tonight, but those are my thoughts.
I had one, just one thing. I, I would just say, on the east side, I mean, there's, it's just the Caltrain down all the way. So there may be ways to work with them in terms of, maybe, can you, could you have double bike lanes there potentially or something? And, you know, put the trees over on the Caltrain property and do something over that, what Cal, you know, that, and there might be more flexibility on the east side and kind of just shift the whole thing. and kind of just shift the whole thing over as well. I just think we need to rethink the, over here.
I think that's good. And is, is, is the Grand Bou, we don't have to get into it, but I mean, is, does this relate to what that Grand Boulevard thing is? Or is that not even a thing anymore? I have no idea.
It is a thing and this is trying to relate to it. So, but every city is doing their portion of the Grand Boulevard a little bit differently. There are variations, but this is trying to, trying to embody that.
Okay.
And that basically means protected bike lanes and, you know, better sidewalks. So that's what we're striving for. But I, I think a lot of the comments tonight are valid and we need to, we need to rethink this a little bit.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And I think that's it on the detailed looks. Lisa or Jim, any more specific questions you might have of us in any of these? Or should we move on to our wrap-ups?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we received plenty of good input from the council this evening.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good. Yeah, of course. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. I wasn't sure if we were ending right now, but I had to kind of, three overarching things that I just wanted to mention. The first is parking. So right now in our downtown, two hours of parking is free, right? But that's it. And then you're supposed to move or you get a ticket. So that's, I feel like, you know, that's just not happening in our parking lots, you know, that are in the alleyways behind the businesses. I think employees are parking there all day. And I just, I don't understand that mindset because it's taking away parking from their clientele that are gonna help them keep their jobs. And as Jim mentioned earlier, the second floor of Wheeler Plaza, where we have carved out all of this employee permit parking is, there's like two cars up there parked. And I go all the time, morning, noon, and night, and no one is using the employee parking. So I know in Santa Barbara, they have lots of parking lots behind their state street promenade. And they're gate-controlled and you get 90 minutes free. And then after that, you have to pay to exit. And I know this is unpopular. I'm not up for reelection, so someone has to say it. But, you know, maybe it's some, as we do these parking studies, maybe that's something that we consider. We give the two hours free parking, so nothing changes. Everybody gets their two hours free. But we need to figure out a better way to incentivize the turnover of parking. And we, lots of us have talked about this because it's just not turning over and it's being abused by certain people who park there all day. And it's not just the employees, it's other people, too. So I would, I would like us to really think creatively about that. Secondly, when this comes back to us, I would really love to see more detailed renderings from the pedestrians' view of how these things are looking. I felt like a lot of the renderings in our packet were aerial views down. And I think some of us have struggled with like, what does the grove really look like? You know, can tables fit in there? What are we talking about? So as we continue down this path personally, since this is, you know, we're working so hard to have this pedestrianized project, what does this look like from, from the pedestrians' view? And then third, I wanted to build on Pranita's comment about the crepe myrtles. I love crepe myrtles, too. They're very pretty when they bloom, but they are very messy. They drop all of their flowers. And I just Googled them and they are prone to aphids. And we have had so many aphid problems downtown. So we have to be super, super thoughtful about which trees we, you know, put in downtown that they are not messy, that they're not prone to the sticky aphids because that is a real sore spot here. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just two follow-ups. One, I'll go on the trees, too. I just, I saw that it sort of looked like there were a lot of deciduous trees there. And I don't know, it just seems like that's a lot of extra work for cleanup and things like that. So I mean, that's just something I would, I'm curious to see where we end up on that. And so I just raised that. And then on the, now I lost my point. What was your first point? Oh, yes, the parking turnover. So I am very much, I know we did this years ago, I think before I was on the council. Ron probably remembers you did some parking study about looking at some different things, about changing hours and enforcement and different things. I think, I think we should relook at that. I think, look at sort of how Palo Alto potentially has a zone parking that may be sort of an interim step where you can't stay in the same zone. Because I think what happens is the employees go and then they move down two spots and they're still, the clock starts again. Where if they had to go to a different zone, you might have better enforcement. I do think, and the parking lots and other areas, we might think about having enforcement later in the evening as well as expecting more people. So not ending at six o'clock, maybe it goes to eight o'clock. So when people are arriving, they have to, you know, be mindful of that as well. But I think we should relook at that and come up with some, some idea. That should be part of what we look at, of how we kind of redo the parking. I'm not quite there on the paid parking. I'd like to look at other solutions.
That's throwing it out there as an idea. I'm not there yet either, but throwing it out there as an idea.
Thank you, Adam. And yeah, I know Palo Alto's grappled with a lot of this, so that, not a bad thing for us to look at. All right, any other final comments on our downtown plan? I'll just say, like I said going in, this is the funnest thing we're gonna do as council members. So even if it doesn't always feel that way. All right. Well, we are, this is new business, so there is a motion to be had. Obviously, it'll have the "with all of our input" asterisk on it. Does anyone, would anyone like to make the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that, move to adopt Resolution 2024 dash?
67?
67, a resolution of the City Council, the city of San Carlos endorsing. The Downtown Advisory Committee has recommended street design for further testing as part of the downtown specific plan plus streetscape master plan project to accommodate council comments tonight. Is that a direction enough? Okay.
I'll second.
True, then we have a motion and a second.
Can I make this one?
Sure.
So I just wanna, I'm just, I guess I'm just confused. We've made so many things on this and I'm just not, it's, it's clear to me like why we're, I don't even, why we're voting on this right now. Because there, to me, this is, we took, we recommended so many changes.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
So, and this is really to answer your question, but also to make sure that the public is aware that what we're doing tonight and the intention behind tonight is you're not authorizing the design of the downtown. What you're doing is, because as you know, this is one of a whole number of meetings that we've had with groups, including the council, we're asking you to make this your concept, right? This overall overarching design is your concept. And that reason we're asking you to do it, to make it with a decision, why we, and we had some debate at the staff level about this, why we were asking for a resolution, is because now we're gonna go spend a bunch of money and a bunch of time to do proof of concept, as has been mentioned, including the comments that you all have provided tonight. So ultimately, the design that you're gonna approve down the road is gonna look like this. Like you, you'll be able to look at it and say, yeah, I recognize that. That, that seems like what we were talking about. But there could be a lot of details that change. Even from our consultant, we heard right from the beginning in the presentation, you know, oh, we're still looking at, maybe the bike lane will go over here, you know, we're still. So the details are no doubt gonna change as we go through the traffic studies and all the environmental work, as we continue to work with our council to get it right. So this isn't like, this is it, go design it to build it. No, this is what you're saying is, this is it, what we want you to now go study. So it's gonna come back to you. And I'm sure when it comes back, the study is gonna reveal some things that we think we could make better in the design that aren't quite on our radar or things that we thought might really be great ideas that we come back and say, well, we discovered a few problems, so here's our suggestions about how we make those changes. So this isn't like the final design that's going to the engineers to get bid and built. It's the concept design that's gonna be now studied in detail so that what comes out at the end, you can design and build.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. So we have a motion and a, Councilmember Collins, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to make one last comment before we vote. And that is, I encourage the council to have any and all paid parking discussions in January.
I don't even know what you're talking about, Ron. We have a motion and a second. Can we take roll call, please?
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. Very good. We have established a concept for our downtown street plan. Thank you very much. I think we can just keep moving here. We're moving on to item 9C, an ordinance amending our municipal code to allow extensions or reappointments of term-limited commissioners. Do we have a staff report this evening, Jeff?
Yes, this one is, is mine. And it's just gonna be quick with one slide here. So the San Carlos Municipal Code currently provides that the council-appointed commissioners are limited to serving no more than two consecutive three-year terms for a maximum total of six consecutive years. These term limits are helpful in that they provide more opportunities for our community members to serve. However, when a commissioner's term expires before an appointment can be made to fill their seat, this results in a commission not being able to operate with a full body. So to help with this, staff recommends that a provision be added to the municipal code to provide the council with the ability to extend a commissioner's length of service if they anticipate that a commission seat will not be filled before the commissioner's term expires or to allow for a temporary reappointment after the term has expired. The extension or reappointment would be for a specified additional time or until the seat is filled, whichever occurs first. We anticipate that this provision will allow commissions to be able to continue business with a full body while they wait for a new commissioner appointment from the council. So next steps, if the proposed ordinance is introduced at this meeting, the second reading will be brought forth on June 24th and then the ordinance would be effective 30 days after. Quick presentation, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to address them.
Thank you, Crystal, appreciate that. Do we have any questions? I will just ask one. What has changed in the sense that in 2018, when I applied to become a planning commissioner, there were three open seats and 47 of us applied to be planning commissioners in that season? And I'm just curious, what, what is so different now?
I'll just say that after COVID, we have had a huge decline of people applying. And it's not just our city. Speaking with my counterparts throughout the county and the state, they're seeing a similar trend.
I just, yeah, I wonder if we just have to put some actual marketing behind it. I don't know if we've ever done that besides just kind of list it like we always have. Maybe we actually have to advertise or something.
I know we, we do put it out there on social media repeatedly and provide reminders throughout the recruitment period. And it goes out in our newsletters as well.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments?
Just gonna comment, I think when people are happy, they don't apply. When things aren't going well, there's lots of applications.
Very good. Well, for the community at large, I will submit that local involvement is a wonderful antidote to the national news cycle. So if 2024 can't get you looking for an antidote to the national news cycle, I don't know what will. So, Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, this is something that I, I actually talked with Jeff about today. And I've got some ideas, but I won't bring them up tonight. I'll bring them up at the mini-retreat and we can talk about the future of commission terms.
Very good, thank you, Ron. If nothing else, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we, now would be the time to raise your hand if you're on Zoom for public comment. Do we have any public comment in the room, Crystal?
Nothing in the room and no hands on Zoom.
All right, we'll pause for 10 more seconds. Raise your hand if you're intending public comment. Looks like we have no public comment on this item. I would entertain a motion.
I can do it. It's a short one. I move to introduce ordinance number?
1616.
1616, an ordinance of the city of San Carlos amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.24.060, commissions' length of service to add a provision allowing extension or reappointment of term-limited commissioners.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. All right, that item's approved. Thank you, Crystal. We will now move on to 9D, resolution concerning our next general election and whether our treasurer should be in appointed position or not.
This one, I'm gonna commence. So the proposed resolution before you this evening covers a few things. First, it's calling for and giving notice of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, for the election of two council members and one city treasurer, each for a full term of four years. It's authorizing the execution of a services agreement with the County of San Mateo for specified services relating to the conduct of a general municipal election that will be consolidated with the statewide election. This resolution also submits a measure to the voters relating to the city treasurer as an appointed position and a request for two council members to be appointed to prepare and file the primary arguments in favor of the measure. And if applicable, file the rebuttal argument as well. On the dais is an updated resolution with a minor technical edit that we made today per recommendation from the county elections office. Specifically, the updated resolution refers to the measures as a full text as opposed to a complete text. And it clarifies that the full text shall appear in the voter pamphlet. Now I'll turn this over to our city attorney to speak on the measure.
Yeah, thank you, Crystal. In March of 2023, the council, I might recall that they reviewed a staff report that I prepared about the options and the appropriateness of changing the currently elected city treasurer position to an appointed position. So, and with the direction given to council to bring that forward, that's, that's what, that's what, part of what is before you tonight. So right now, the term for the current elected city treasurer expires this year in, in 2024. If the measure to make the city treasurer position appointed passes on November 5th and there are no candidates, then the council could appoint at the end of the current term. But if there is, a treasurer holds papers and is elected in the 2024 election, then that elected official would serve the remainder of his term until, or until 2028, again, should the measure pass. After, after the measure, or if the measure passes, the council would then consider whether or not the appointment of the city treasurer would be by council action or by, or delegated to the city manager. Currently, the, the city manager appoints the city clerk, which was once an elected position in San Carlos. And so there's some timelines, there's an impartial analysis. And then we are, Crystal talked about the, the, the measure, the arguments for, for, and rebuttal arguments have some deadlines consistent with getting the pamphlets ready for the, for the voters. And with that, we are open to any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Crystal and Greg. I think we did study this once, but any questions? Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one question. And I think I, I mean, I think the city attorney clarified it. But so if this, if the measure to make it appointed passes, we don't have to make a decision in the measure on how that individual is appointed. We would do that, the council would decide at a later time by ordinance or however that would be.
Yeah, we would have to do some cleanup ordinance amendments and then, and again, talk about whether the council wants to retain the power to appoint or not. And, you know, there's some, some other details about the position that we would, we would need to address in those cleanup ordinances.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I think our school board was recently told an off-cycle special election would be $650,000. I'm assuming this is much, much cheaper than that, given this is just added on to a general election. But do we have the rough budget number from the county? But do we have the rough budget number from the county on this?
Yes, the quote was between $103,000 to $123,000. So much, much less.
All right, got it. Okay, those are my questions. Any further comment or concern? Councilmember Rack?
So I guess the only comment I would have, I think we need to, assuming we need to decide who's, who would recommend, who would sign the arguments in favor and rebuttal? So I would, I would recommend the mayor and the vice mayor.
I'll second.
Otherwise, that's just my, I think since we've, if we voted as a 5-0, I think it's, it's not like there's split on that.
Yeah, it's fair. I just, I guess there's a drafting requirement. And honestly, my plate's feeling rather full of late. But would anyone else want to be on this commission?
Mayor, if I may, I'm happy with that if you want to do that. But I was going to offer to put my name on that because I'm not up for reelection and I don't have any political capital in it. So, I mean, if that is the pleasure of the council, I'd be happy to, to put my name on the arguments for and the rebuttals.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that. And yeah, I would prefer not to be involved in that in this cycle.
So the action item is to adopt the resolution that would call for the election and authorize the placing of the, the measure for appointed treasurer on the ballot. And, and then we have a blank in the proposed resolution to, for the names of the people for the arguments and the rebuttals.
Does the city attorney write that rebuttal? Write the argument or who writes the arguments?
I write the impartial analysis. And then there's, then the, under the statutory authority, the argument in favor of the measure that would be by the subcommittee of the council is 300 words. And there's a very technical requirement on that that I can help you with counting the words to make sure that you're in compliance. And then if there is a rebuttal argument that's brought by a citizen or a group of citizens, then there's a 250-word rebuttal to the, to that, to the, I think it's called a rebuttal to the rebuttal. I think if you look at the pamphlets. But that's, that's what you'd be doing on that part of it, so.
And I was just going to offer that I'm happy to forward some samples of, of arguments in favor of a measure for a city treasurer as an appointed position. I've seen a number of them from neighboring cities that I can share.
Yeah, we're not, we're not the first one doing this. So there are samples of what people have done. But, you know, you might have other ideas of what you'd want to present.
Yeah, I mean, I feel a little awkward drafting it because I don't feel that strongly on this issue. And even knowing it's $120,000 is, you know, I'm not, it doesn't feel like a necessary change to me. But I think I'm generally supportive.
I just want to make a point of clarification for the public. The $120,000 is for the entire election. It's not, it doesn't really have anything to do with the treasurer item specifically.
Oh, that's right.
It's our general election, so.
Oh, I see. So adding this item does not add incremental costs to our quote from the county?
It's minor.
Oh, okay. I got it. Yeah, I was surprised if this item was $120,000, so, okay.
Yeah, one of the actions is you're consolidating the election with other elections in the county and adding the treasurer item to it.
Got it, got it. Sure, yeah. Do we have any public comment on this item? If you're online, now would be the time to raise your hand.
We have one person joining us on Zoom, and their hand is not up.
All right, we'll pause for two minutes if you're in, I'm sorry, for 20 seconds. If you're intending public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And no comments in the room?
No comments.
Okay, we have no public comment on this. So who would like to join Ron to write our position 300 words?
I'll join. But Ron, you're taking the first crack at it.
I'll be the ghostwriter.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. So does this, okay, yeah. So I will entertain a motion, and there's two parts to the motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2024-?
68.
68, I thought so. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos calling for and giving notice of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, for the election of certain municipal officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California relating to general law cities, authorizing the execution of a services agreement with the County of San Mateo for specified services relating to conducting a general municipal election and to be consolidated with the statewide election and submitting a measure to the voters, a question relating to the city treasurer as an appointed position, including the technical amendment as reported by the city clerk and appointing yours truly, Ron Collins and Sarah McDowell to file a written argument in favor of the measure and, if applicable, submit a rebuttal agreement.
I'll second. Thank you, Ron. I look forward to joining you. I just don't look forward to writing this.
I'm sure it'll be fun.
Thank you, colleagues. We have a motion and a second. We'll take roll call.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, 9E, a consideration of our mid-cycle budget adjustments.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight, we do have the adoption of the mid-cycle adjustments. There's three resolutions for your approval tonight. The first is the formal adoption. The second is the establishment of the GAN limit. And finally, is the adoption of the classification of committed balances as per GASB 54. Given the lateness of the hour, I'll try to get through these very quickly. So last June, you adopted the biennial 2023-25 budget, which was the result of an inclusive and interactive process. We had a study session, and there was a lot of input in from that. One of the advantages of a two-year budget is the amount of time savings for both staff and the council. So the resolution you approved last year set the appropriation levels for both this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. But this mid-cycle review allows us, allows the departments and the council the opportunity to review any of the assumptions made last year, as well as to, an opportunity to request some program adjustments if needed to achieve the strategic goals. So before we get into the changes for next fiscal year, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the projected performance this year. Fiscal year 2324 revenues are projected to be higher by approximately $3.7 million, primarily due to increases expected from property taxes, higher plan check revenues, higher recreation class and camp revenue, which is at its highest levels, and a one-time payment associated with the Wheeler Plaza development. These revenues have been offset by expected decreases in sales tax and vehicle and lieu revenues. Expenditures are projected to be $660,000 less than the revised budget, primarily due to salary savings from positions being vacant during the year. And as the table indicates, there's approximately $4.34 million change to the operating fund balance in the projected general fund revenues. So there are four recommended changes in the general fund operating budget. These have been incorporated into the proposed budget in your packet. In the Public Works Department, funds in the amount of $158,650, offset by allocations in from the wastewater fund in the amount of $50,000, are requested to support a new full-time Assistant Public Works Director. Given the expected timeframe for this recruitment, the position has been funded for six months of the fiscal year. Secondly, funds in the amount of $191,900, offset by allocations in from the wastewater fund in the amount of $25,000, have been requested to support a new time, a new full-time Assistant Public Works Superintendent at the corp yard. In the public safety budget, there are two changes. Funding in the amount of $152,000 to pay for an increase in services in the fire and emergency services agreement with Redwood City. This increase in services will cover a portion of the emergency management coordinator, training captain, a wellness program, and an increase in recruitment costs to maintain the staffing levels required. And finally, the use of $275,000 of prior year savings associated with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Agreement. This money is coming from the trust fund that we have. And as of March 31, 2024, the balance in that account is 1.3 million. So the revised general fund budget shown here includes all of the adjustments previously approved by city council. The accounting adjustments column represents changes to the assumptions and revenues and expenses based on historical trends, projections based on current economic trends and conditions, and information from our third-party consultants. Also included in this category is savings resulting from the one-time pay down of the CalPERS pension obligations that you approved in January of this year. So although these adjustments reflect a total change in the operating budget, you'll see that of a negative $361,000. We're recommending the use of $400,000 from our unfunded liability reserve that will be used to offset the costs associated with the legacy costs for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. These, this, the balance in this reserve is $4 million, and the funds were set aside for this purpose. So moving to the wastewater fund, there's only one change that's been recommended, and that is to include a project for a manhole monitoring system upgrade. This will install monitoring technology at various sewer manholes, which will facilitate remote monitoring and control. And so this program request has been recommended and incorporated into the proposed budget. And it was also incorporated into the wastewater rate study that was reviewed and approved by the city council on April 8, and what you'll be taking action on later tonight. The special revenue funds, these are used to account for revenues that are restricted by law or administrative action. So in this, it includes the National Pollutant Discharge Illumination System, or NPDS funds, the police grant funds, and our library tenant funds. So the accounting adjustments column includes the transfer of fund balance following the payoff of the library bonds from Fund 95 into the general fund and capital funds to offset future expenses related to the library. So earlier tonight on the consent calendar, you approved a resolution setting the tax rate for the library bonds for an early payoff in celebration of the city's centennial. That resulted in a 10% reduction to the taxpayers in fiscal year '25 and no tax due in fiscal year '26. Other program funds, these are, these include workers' compensation, general liability, and our post-employment benefits trust fund. And also included in here is our debt service fund. So the accounting adjustments include increases anticipated for workers' compensation insurance, general liability insurance, property insurance, and the employment risk management insurance that we just got coverage for beginning July 1. In the capital fund, so last year, the city council was presented with the five-year capital improvement program budget as part of the study session. There were many approved projects, and a detailed listing of those can be found in your packet beginning on page 783. A little further back. So in the gas tax fund, there are two recommended changes. The first is additional funding for the annual street resurfacing. And the second is additional funding for the annual sidewalk and repair construction projects. These are annual projects, and if they're saving from prior years, we roll those forward into this to continue the work. So in the general capital fund, there are 11 new projects for consideration. I'll give you a brief update or a summary of these, but additional detail can be found in your packet in the capital improvement section. So the first is the landslide repairs in the hillsides above Eaton Trail, 3101 Britton Road, Sheldon Road, and Chilton Park in the amount of $1 million. These mitigation measures are needed to prevent further or future erosion of the hillside. Industrial road turning mitigation between Holly Street and Pamp in the amount of $100,000. This project will repave the roadway and construct improvements for turning movements. The traffic signal master plan implementation in the amount of $250,000 in fiscal year '24-25 and $150,000 in fiscal year '25-26. So staffs identified 24 signalized intersections that need to be updated. There's a project for a roundabout at Crispie Road and Edmunds Road in the amount of $316,000. This project would fund a traffic calming pilot improvement to address community safety concerns. The Highlands Park snack shack needs repairs in the amount of $65,000. And this includes new refrigeration, interior paint, cabinets, and modifications to the serving area. These improvements will be offset by $10,000 from the Park and Rec Foundation. At the Adult Community Center, funding in the amount of $150,000 to add sound panels throughout the building and repairs to the upstairs office due to water leaks. The Friends of the ACC will be donating $50,000 to this project. The existing fire alarm panel has been operational since 1990, and it does need to be updated. So this project's estimated to cost $150,000. The corporation yard kitchen and restroom also needs to be updated as it's not been updated for several years and was built when there were fewer employees in the building. So the cost to update this is estimated at $170,000. The solar panels at the corp yard also need replacing and upgrading since they've been in place since 2004, and those costs are estimated at $175,000. In the sheriff's substation, there's also significant upgrades needed, specifically with the flooring and the cabinets. So this work is estimated $175,000 and would be paid for from the trust fund that I mentioned earlier that we have at the sheriff's office. And finally, there's a project added to update the computerized maintenance management system. This is the computer system that manages the corp yard assets, schedules maintenance, and tracks and prioritizes work orders. The existing system is over a decade old, and it's estimated to be replaced at $150,000. So similar to the operating budget, the mid-cycle review allows departments to review their projected estimates for projects that have already been approved by the council. There are six projects that have been identified to need additional funding. The first is the, is project number C1725, or the upgrade of the pedestrian signals. This project was initially budgeted at $200,000 for the planning and design. But with implementation anticipated this fiscal year, additional funding is, has been requested of $630,000. Project C1811, to repave the asphalt walking path at Highlands. This project was originally budgeted at $150,000. However, since this pathway is used to implement the fire mitigation program, the pathway needs to be accessible and level to bring in the necessary equipment. Therefore, additional funding of $870,000 has been requested. Project 2201, or the Safe Routes to School project. This is additional project funding approved earlier tonight on the consent calendar. And these are improvements at the intersection of Arroyo and Chestnut. And the total costs of this project are $867,000, which will be offset by reimbursements from the school district in the amount of $20,500, and the priority legislative grant in the amount of $150,000. Project 2210 is our East Side Innovation District zoning code, and an additional $442,300 has been requested to update the city's transportation demand management, or the TDM plan. Project 2211, the Northeast Specific Plan Project, is needing an additional $50,000 to complete. And Project 2311, or the 2030 General Plan Amendment Project, also needs an additional $30,000 to complete a demand analysis based on economic and development patterns. So these new projects and additional requests have been offset by projects that have either been completed or were anticipated, or are anticipated to need less funding than was originally budgeted. So in particular, the bids for some of the landslide projects that you've approved earlier this year came in much li, lower. this year came in much lower than what we had budgeted. Also, the North Crestview Passive Park Improvement Project has been replaced with the North Crestview Master Plan Project, which will be coming forward at another time. So in the Park and Lou Fund, there are two new project requests. Staff has proposed $150,000 for Burton Park infield renovations. The cost for this project will be offset by donations in the amount of $75,000 from AYSO, softball, and the Park and Recreation Foundation. Also, it's recommended that $150,000 be funded toward the Chilton Park pathway modifications. This project will fix the cracks that have been noticed by the park users. So the project recommendations have been incorporated into the proposed adjustments shown here, and as I said earlier, the accounting adjustments column is just changes to the revenue assumptions and other transfers from other funds. So since the capital project, capital improvement program budget is a five-year plan, it's also recommended that the following changes be made in the future years, or fiscal years 2025 through 2028, and these include the North Crestview Park Design, following the adoption of the master plan in the amount of $500,000. Funds for the second-floor city hall remodel to better accommodate the needs of the increased staff in the amount of $1,750,000, and funds in the amount of $150,000 to replace or upgrade the existing agenda management system. So in addition to the new projects, there's additional funding that's been requested in the out-years. On the gas tax fund, additional funding towards street resurfacing in the amount of $3 million or $1 million per year in fiscal year 26, 27, 28. And in the general capital fund, additional funding for Project 9806, the Belmont Water Creek Watershed Improvement Project, in the amount of $550,000 to construct an upstream detention facility in partnership with the city of Belmont. And Project C9838, the Four Corners Traffic Improvements, has also requested more funding. So this is just a quick snapshot of the recommended spending over the next four years. If you remember, last year was $182 million, around there, and now we're down to $150 million because of the spending that's been done to date. So although we do have a balanced budget, there's always some significant threats out there that may impact our future budgets. The first one is climate change and its effect on our resources in the form of higher water rates, water conservation, wildfire threats, and as we saw over the last two years, the events of flooding. Significant increases in our street resurfacing and stormwater needs, the rising public safety costs, uncertainty with CalPERS and the investment rates, and uncertainties with the vehicle and lieu funding from the county. So over the past few years, we've seen reductions in our vehicle and lieu revenue due to county-wide shortfalls in revenue. And every year when we experience the shortfall, the county agencies submit letters to the governor's office to include that money in the next budget cycle. So although the governor didn't include this reimbursement, the revenue's been included as part of the state legislature's budget, so we're hopeful to get some relief this coming So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Staff is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate the thorough report.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I need to recuse myself from one item, so I talked to the city attorney about that, because I lived within 500 feet of Burton Park. So I don't know if there's a way we can discuss that separately if need be, and then I can come back into the room.
Yeah, so what we're doing is we're segmenting the decision-making so that the, the Council member Rack's proximity to that part of Burton Park can be handled separately. So what we'll do is Councilmember Rack will leave the room on, while the council discusses that one item of the budget element, the Burton Park segment, and then after that, Councilmember Rack can come back in and then discuss the entire budget.
I, I guess I live close to Chilton Park, so must I do the same?
It's Chilton. Yeah, if you're, if you're, if you're close to Chilton Park, if you're within 500 feet of Chilton Park, the same rule would apply to you.
So what are you recommending? We discuss everything but these two items, and then Adam and I leave the room, and we handle those two items?
No, the protocol is you have to leave first. For those two items, the rest of the council can discuss those two items, then you can return for the rest of the budget.
Okay, all right.
Should be clear.
I, I. Okay.
Yeah, right, I can, I'll leave for Burton, you can leave for Chilton.
All right. Okay, so we are talking about the Burton Park improvements only. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Rack.
He's gone.
I'm sorry, Collins. I was throwing right at you, right?
I know, it's late. We got lots of emails about softball fields. I assume this is to do what to the field to allow it to be used for softball? I, you know, it's just a dirt infield right now, so I, I need some help. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just, thank you, Amy, help me out here.
Yeah, no, here I am. This project is going to renovate Flanagan Field, shrink that infield. That field was typically designed for those older baseball teams and players, and so the youth softball organization is looking for a home city field, let's say, similar to kind of Arguello Park and how Little League has taken that on as their like home field. So this will accommodate youth softball, where we're shrinking that infield. As a result of that, we're going to increase Madsen slightly so that it can just accommodate more variety of play on those two fields.
You said you were going to increase which?
Madsen. So Flanagan is on Woodland, and then Madsen is Britton and Cedar, so there's renovations to both infield so that they can accommodate more of our youth baseball and softball teams. It does increase the grass for soccer, that is why they're bought into the project, so all of our main sports organizations have committed funding for this and are in favor of it.
So, I'm sorry, I'm still thinking Babe Ruth, you know, is that, will that still be played at Flanagan? Will it, does it accommodate?
So the Little League organization hasn't had one of those teams consistently every year, and when they do, they are utilizing the high school fields.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, I'm just going to make a comment that I really appreciate how the sports leagues work together. It's my understanding that Little League worked with youth softball, and it sounds like soccer was involved. I think that I'm definitely in favor of this. I think it's time for our, you know, our girls' softball to have a regulation-sized field. They don't have that right now, and I think that, you know, since Arguello is so nice for Little League, that it's, it's time to do this, so I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Councilmember Venkatesh.
I'm also going to support it, and yes to girls' softball, and we did get a lot of people who would like this, so I'm going to say yes.
Thank you, Pranita. And yeah, that's, this is an easy one. We've said yes in many different ways to baseball, and glad we do, because we have really good youth baseball, but we have really good youth softball, too, so this is an easy one. And Greg, do we take a formal vote on this item, then?
First, you'll take public comment, just in case there's any, and then you'll vote on this particular item as a separate item.
Okay, yeah, so now's the time for public comment on our Burton Park improvements. 20 seconds to raise your hand if you're online.
We actually do not have any participants joining us on Zoom, and I do not have any speaker slips for in-person.
Okay, thank you. So no public comment. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Burton Park improvements.
I'll motion to approve the Burton Park improvements.
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
I think Pranita got that one. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rack is recused, Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh.
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan.
Yes, that's approved. We will now move on to the Chilton Park improvements. I hand the gavel to the vice mayor, and we'll be back shortly.
Okay, we'll move on to the Chilton Park improvements. Go ahead, please, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions about Chilton Park, or do you want Amy to talk about it?
I mean, I understand this is just sort of, we had some upgrade, some sort of fixing of trails, some trails and some stuff that needed some work from the last time, and it's sort of just maintenance work that needs to happen, so I'm, I don't have any questions, I'm good.
Councilmember Collins?
I don't have any questions on this, but I have questions on one of the other items in the budget. We're still going to talk about.
Just doing Chilton Park right now, because John's recused, yes, and it's a pathway that I think is getting fixed up.
I'm fine.
Cracking pathway. Okay, is there any public comment, Crystal, on Chilton Park?
No hands are raised.
Okay, I see no one here in person. In that, I will accept a motion for the Chilton Park improvements.
So moved, I move, I motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Crystal, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan is recused. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to questions and discussions for other items in this mid-year budget cycle. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca, the one thing that caught my eye was the Four Corners Traffic Improvements of $2 million. Since I was on that committee for years and years, and nothing happened, can you bring me up to date on what this really means?
Yes, give me just a minute. I believe we just moved it out a couple of years.
Okay. I mean, is it actually going to get done?
That's a question for Stephen.
I'm waiting anxiously for your, I mean, we started working on this in 2013, so please tell me we're going to do this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. In response to your question, yeah, we are working on, you know, the city of Belmont, they are actually the lead agency who's actually moving forward. So it is still under design, we're still moving forward. One of the things they do want to commit is to get, you know, some additional fundings available so that we can actually kind of get this project underway. It's still a little bit of a ways out, but it's still moving forward, so certainly it's moving.
And is it the, the design that we voted on years ago with the three roundabouts?
Yes, it is. Yes, there's still some additional work that we're kind of coordinating between the school districts as far as where the locations of the driveways are, and et cetera, et cetera, but, you know, we're still moving forward with a lot of those improvements.
The general concept's the same.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, if I can just clarify, we just moved the funding, we moved $250,000 of that into an earlier year to work on what Stephen just mentioned.
Thank you, Ron. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, one of my questions was Four Corners, because I also, we talked about it when I was back in the school board in 2011 and 13 as well, so that's answered. I had two additional budget requests that I wanted to make, so I don't know if this is the appropriate time to do that, or we want to do that at a later time.
Why don't we bring up such items now?
Okay, thank you. I have two items. One is related to some of the parking that we talked about at the, on the last item, is I had spoken, I've spoken with the Public Works Director, or the city manager, about doing an assessment of the current red striping in the downtown area. I'm finding that when I walk, I see lots of red striping that says San Carlos P.D., and a lot of it that doesn't, which I think is sort of illegally done red striping to kind of save parking areas and stuff, and I think it's impacting our overall parking downtown. The Public Works Director has meant, let me know that it would be about $35,000 to do it in the downtown area. I think it would be a good thing to do as part of our parking study so that we can make sure we're maximizing what parking we do have, and eliminating any kind of illegal red striping.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that just an enforcement thing? Can the sheriff go out and, like, you can't just red stripe wherever you want, how, what happens to, what is the punishment for doing that, and how are they caught?
Well, basically, it's typically as, as it is reported. However, the $35,000, that's essentially to hire a, you know, consultant to go out and actually inventory kind of within designated areas. So I believe the areas was bounded by Elm Street, San Carlos, El Camino, and Britton, I believe, in those cases.
Sort of a downtown area.
And so we'd essentially send out a consultant to kind of go out and inventory all the, all the red curb markings, and then really identify those, those markings that they suspect either don't have the San Carlos or SCPD stencil, and then if there, you know, the shades of red color doesn't appear to be correct, or if it's certainly not in our inventory that we have, you know, in the public works department.
Okay, two, two questions. Why wouldn't we just go out there and anything that doesn't have SCPD painted gray and fix
We certainly could do that, but in many instances, sometimes, you know, we go periodically and do kind of refresh the red, red paint, and sometimes we don't always have the stencil with us, so we'd have to go back after, after the fact, so we'll have to double-check these things.
Stephen, okay.
Stephen, we don't have a master, like, map of where our curb opinion is?
I think we, we have a listing of all the things, you know, that, that is one of the tasks that certainly we would like to do.
Stephen, let me jump in here, try to provide some explanation. So we know where they're supposed to be, but we don't know necessarily where the illegal ones are. Typically, and it's pretty rare that this happens, but it's usually complaint-based, like, your neighbor notices, all of a sudden you have a handicap paint in front of your curb, or red paint in front of your curb, or loading zone that doesn't belong there, and they call the city and say, hey, what's up with that? And, and then we look at the record and say, yeah, it's not supposed to be there, and then we take care of it. This would be a proactive approach to go out and look at the area. So the money that's being proposed would be to pay somebody to actually go out and do the inventory, so we can compare it to where we know they're supposed to be. So it's kind of that case of it's hard to prove a negative. The only way to do it is to actually go out and look at everything, have somebody walk every block and make notations of what's actually they're seeing, and then they'll give that to us, and we can compare it to what we know is supposed to be there. But the only way to do that is to actually send eyeballs out to, you know, specifically inventory what's in the field.
Understood. My, my final question, and this is something that John and I grappled with in the Infrastructure Subcommittee, we talked about the new law that we recently went on the books about daylighting and red curbing, and so if we're going out there and inventorying our current red curb, and now we find it's out of compliance with the new law, and we have to extend it quite a bit to be in compliance, like, I'm, I'm a little worried that this is going to end up opening a Pandora's Box of us actually having to increase red curbing because of the new California state law. Do you foresee that happening?
Certainly, that, that is, that is a possibility. You know, basically, once we do find a situation where it's inconsistent with state law, you know, we would have to take action.
Can you clarify when the daylighting, does that mean for traffic safety that people can have better visual lanes to see? Or what do they mean by daylighting?
New law around every single, I don't even want to say it. Around every single intersection, you have to have a really long, a 20 feet, it's, it's very, it's a very long, it'd take away a lot of parking, and it's something that all the local cities are grappling with, and it's going to be very painful.
Do we have to do it anyway?
Well, Stephen's working on that with his colleagues.
Yeah, we're currently working that kind of countywide, so, you know, what we would like, really like to do is actually have all the cities in the, in the county kind of develop a, a similar program, so basically, we're all kind of responding in a similar manner.
Okay, but we have to respond, and we're going to have to do it anyway at some point, or how is it, what is the requirement?
Or how is it, what is the requirement around that?
Well, the law went into effect on January 1st of this year. However, enforcement cannot start until January next year, January 1st next year. So in most instances, most cities have been on a pause, you know, not because they really don't want to force, I mean, basically, police officers or law enforcement, the only thing they could really do is they could tell you that, you know, this is the law. However, they cannot cite at this time.
But next year, in January, if I wanted to call up the city and say, you haven't red striped this corner, I could do that, and you would have to enforce that?
Yes, unless, you know, unless there were certain exceptions.
There's just a plan or certain exceptions on that? Okay. I mean, I guess, I mean, I don't know. I think if we're already going to have to do certain things anyway, I'm less worried about it. But that's, I mean, but I mean, I'll let everybody else decide on that.
Stephen, in the same vein, is there any, I know we're putting $250,000 towards the Traffic Signal Master Plan, but are there any additional low-hanging fruit to accelerate our Traffic Signal Master Plan that some smallish amount of additional funding would help with?
You know, after discussion with staff, I believe we have identified that, you know, pretty much all the low-hanging fruit, or at least we're planning to do a lot of the work that, you know, council has directed us to do so.
Okay. Sure, let's take a basket approach.
All right. So the second item is I've discussed with the Park and Recs Director and with the City Manager on is sort of, I would say, sort of an update or improvement, technological improvement to our open space parks, which would be to develop QR codes at the open space parks, at the entrances that would, you can sort of scan it, be able to see the trails, and also sort of have a listing of what kind of wildlife, trees, animals, and other things are there that you can look for, maybe understand what wildflowers may be blooming and stuff like that. So just sort of be an interactive device that you can now use, you know, within the open space parks. The estimate for that is between $15,000 and $20,000 to do, to develop it and put it through on the website and other things. So that would be my second item.
All right, thank you, Adam. As we go around, you can comment on any of these proposed items as you ask further questions and have other comments. Councilmember Collins?
Oh, I'm sorry, this was-
Okay, very good.
I have a question. So, I'm sorry, Adam, building on that, is Parks and Rec going to develop that list of wildflowers and things like that?
I believe that when I talked to the Parks and Rec Director, she said the total cost to do the design, the web work, the technological infrastructure, and have one do an assessment would be in that $15,000 to $20,000 range. To do the whole thing, they would outsource the work around that, but that would be the whole project.
I personally would support that. I think that sounds like something the community would enjoy.
Yeah, I'll just chime in to say, I like the idea of the open space park. If it is a reasonable spend like that, I think we can find the spare change for something that could be really impactful for folks to use their open space parks. So I like that idea. All right. Looks like we have consensus on an extra $15,000 to $20,000 for an open space park. And any other questions or comments on this budget?
I have a question, actually. It's just a kind of big picture question, and either for Rebecca or for the City Manager. I just think we would be remiss tonight if we didn't talk about kind of economic uncertainty. We talked about, you mentioned the state, and, you know, the state is facing a pretty significant budget crisis. And I feel like San Carlos has typically weathered the storms pretty well. But how do you see us weathering, you know, the current economic environment with our reserves and our rainy day funds?
We have a very healthy reserve. And the third item in your budget package tonight is to just reaffirm your reserve balances, to agree that you have enough reserves to cover those kinds of things.
Another measurement for me is, you know, depending on, you know, who you believe in terms of the economists, we're really about a year and a half into this downturn. And, you know, the first year that we're coming to an end of, of our two-year budget, which is really the base of next year's budget, which we're talking about tonight, is showing, you know, a slight increase or a slight exceeding of our revenue projections, the typical sort of conservative underspending on our expenditure side. So that even, you know, sort of what would typically be in a Bay Area recession, sort of the halfway point for fairly decent-sized recession, we're still generating, you know, modest economic gain. It's certainly not comfortable. You know, we know that based on the economy, our budget's kind of on the edge, but it's on the good side of the edge. If things were to, you know, if we were to see things significantly change in a negative way in this coming year, we have a number of options that we would look at implementing for next year's budget. We haven't even implemented, like, what's considered to be like your first line of defense, which would be a soft hiring freeze. So we really feel like we're in a pretty good position right now based on how this recession's been treating us. But of course, it's very much in the forefront of our mind, too, to continue to watch those quarterly, you know, revenue projection trends and make sure that things are on track. If they start to go, you know, if we get the sense that maybe our budget isn't right and we're even just six months in, we'll be back before you to start to make changes.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
I had the same question regarding the fees. And then how much money do we have that we're in vehicle in lieu funding?
So we were short about $1,003,000 this year. And so I've projected that we're not, we're still going to have a decline next year. So I do have, you know, if we do get something back, it's going to help us.
Thank you. And then as our community's growing, have we set aside money for, like, cultural events? Like Lunar New Year, Diwali, is that Parks and Recs?
That would be probably part of their special events programs.
Because right now it's at the library, and it'd be nice to have something a little bit larger.
Good evening. So there's actually two Lunar New Year celebrations in town. The ACC does one, and then the Community Foundation has hosted a Lunar New Year celebration, which, yes, was at the library this year, and they might look to change location just due to the turnout that they got last year. And no additional events are proposed right now in the budget from our current calendar of events.
And then for Diwali, does the library also do that?
I don't know if the library does a Diwali event. I know our U Center has done a celebration.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, Pranita. We're going to turn, we're going to hear from Ron Collins, and then we're going to turn to public comments. So if you're logged in on Zoom, now's the time to raise your hand. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah sort of asked my general question, which was, you know, what are the, you know, what were the overall impression of the budget? But what I was wondering about, and Jeff and I had this discussion today, but it made me think of something else, and that is, are there any state actions that we ought to be concerned about, given that, you know, the state's got a deficit and they're looking to cut here and there? What are we concerned about that the state may do that may impact us?
Well, my biggest concern right now is VLF because it is such a large portion of our revenues. And if they continue to take that money from us, we're just going to, because it is, it is our money. It was part of the VLF swap that was done in 2004, 2005. And so, you know, it does have a big impact because it should be growing the same rate as our property tax. And so we do have a very stable property tax base. And with all of the additional development that's coming on, that's going on to our assessed rolls. And that's why we're seeing property tax increases. And once it's on the assessed roll, unless they file a claim to have it disputed and have it reduced or have it revalued, it's pretty steady. And so that's been very helpful to get us through this. Now, we are seeing development slow, which is also something that's concerning because, you know, some of the things, as I look at my 10-year forecast, I had, you know, the hotels opening a little sooner than in some of this other development starting, which does impact our fees and charges for revenues as well. So there's those things. And Jeff, did you want to add anything or?
No, I mean, I think that covers it. You know, in the 1990s, the state kind of went wild with diverting local government revenues every time they had a budget shortfall. But in, what was, 2005, 2004, 2005, when the state voters passed Proposition 1A to protect this local government revenue from exactly that, the state, there are few loopholes. They can divert money, but then they have to pay it back at some point. So, you know, if they, you know, want to take some money from us now, they're going to have to pay it back. And I believe it's with interest as well when they do. So that's really curbed the state's, you know, addiction to taking from us. So we have limited exposure these days compared to, you know, a couple of decades past.
Thank you.
All right, we will turn now to public comment on our revised budget. Do we have any public comment, Crystal?
No, we don't have any public comments, or a public comment speaker slips.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you. Rebecca, thanks for the great presentation. I just had two comments that I'd like to make before we vote. I wanted to say that I think this budget does a really good job of balancing the need for healthy reserves to face economic uncertainty while also making massive investments in upgrading our roads and our sidewalks, our sewer system, and of course, meeting the needs of our community. I also want to say that in our next budget cycle, I want to get very serious about how we fund the first phase of our downtown improvements. So I hope that, you know, we can really focus on that and really think hard about the amount of money that we're going to need and how we're going to kick it off. I think our community is really ready to get construction going and see these plans come to life. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that. And yes, I do think this is a strong budget. I appreciate all the work that goes into a budget like this in every department and even staying up to midnight with us to get it approved here. So I appreciate all the staff's good efforts and all the, you know, it is, when you go through our budget, it is just amazing what a community of 30,000 has to do every year and what we continue to move forward. It's impressive. So thank you, everyone. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
All right, let me find it here.
The first motion, yeah.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-
Dash 69.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting proposed mid-cycle fiscal year 2425 general fund and non-general fund budgets. This is one item, and then we need to do the other two separately? Separate votes?
Yes.
Separate votes?
Yes, separate votes, and then you-
And can I add my item on the Park and Rec? An additional $20,000 for the Park and Rec improvements at the open space parks, as discussed.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2024 dash-
70.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos electing the population and price adjustment factors and establishing the fiscal year 2024-25 appropriation limit of the City of San Carlos pursuant to California Constitution, Article 13B and Section 7900 ETS-SEQ of the California Government Code.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024 dash 71, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos classifying the various components of the general fund balance, general fund fund balance as committed, balances as defined in Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54, Gatsby 54.
Second again.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes, very good. We have a revised budget. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Adam, for getting that done. Let's move on to our final item this evening, a public hearing considering wastewater rates. And we have 14 minutes, or we turn into pumpkins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. I'll make it to the lightness of the hour. I'll make rather brief. With me tonight, I do have Gabe Sasser, who's Project Manager of HFNH. So the presentation tonight, we're just really going real quickly, sewer utility overview. I'll be talking a little bit about this revenue requirements, proposed rates, the rate comparison, and then the adoption process. So as you know, probably you heard from the last time, city serves approximately 30,000 residents of 11,000 are accounts. 92% are really residential accounts. So city operates wastewater collection system. There's about 104 miles of sewer main, one mile of pressure bane, and as well as four pump stations. Basically, all wastewater goes to Silicon Valley Clean Water, the plant down at the bay. And the wastewater treatment and collection costs are recovered through our city sewer rates. So the commercial, institutional, and industrial rates are really based on flow as well as the strength of the sewage wastewater flow. Sewer charges are billed by the county on the property tax rolls. And we also have a low-income discount program, which was started in 2016. So on this table really shows you what we are currently charged currently. And just as a reminder, this current year, council elected to have a rate holiday. So this year, we actually did not have a rate increase. This is a stacked bar chart that kind of shows you over the course of the, what, six years of what we, our projections are spending. And as you can see, revenue is the current rate. We're a little bit below, but that's kind of to be expected. This is a bar chart that kind of shows you what, looking over the, from the past, what, three years? And then the current three years of what we're projecting or recommending a 3% rate increase. Basically, we really want to stay kind of a little bit above that blue dashed line. And as you can see with the 3% rate, we are, you know, healthy above the rates of that blue line. And then, so this is kind of in table form of the 3% over the next three years. So starting on July 1st, or actually, yeah, July 1st of 2024, July 1st of 2025, and July 1st of 2026. As you can see, it's a 3% increase over the next three years. And this is how, kind of a bar chart showing where we are as it relates to kind of many of the communities within San Mateo County. As you can see, we're probably in the upper third. Basically, with the current rates for 2024, or starting in 2024, would be 1,443. This is for a single-family home. As you can see, there are some other cities kind of larger, some of the cities smaller. One of the reasons why the City of San Carlos is a little bit higher than some of our contemporaries is, you know, we did have the seasons disorder. And we, essentially, we have a five-year, or excuse me, a five-program sewer capital improvement program that we kind of have implemented since that time, I believe it was 2017. And we just continue to maintain that program. Whereas with many other of our other cities within the county, they're probably not doing as much as we are doing as far as, and the main reason is we really do want to kind of maintain our sewer system as well as kind of correct any of the old and failing pipes that we have in our system. And, you know, for the most part, most of the cities, certainly on the West Coast, I think we're also, are probably in the same boat as far as the age of the infrastructure is about 50 to 70 years old. And so we're kind of no different than any other community on the West Coast. And so we're kind of no different than any other community on the West Coast. So what we're asking you tonight is you to hold a public hearing and receive any comments. By the way, we have, as of Friday, we actually received five protests. And then just late today, we actually received two email protests. You know, certainly, we acknowledge them and we understand what they're saying. Unfortunately, we're not considering them as part of the five, I think because they do not meet the 218 process of a protest where they actually have to sign their letter of protest. In this case, it came through email. So we had five and then we do have these two other emails that we received late today. And then June 24th is, we would have the second reading of the ordinance and adoption and then the rates go into effect 30 days afterwards. So with that, I think Gabe and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Stephen. And I mean, this is the same 333 we approved a couple of months ago, but now it's gone through the notice process and it's back before us now for approval. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Collins?
Just a general comment. I appreciate the letters that people sent, but I have to say that as a member of the Silicon Valley Clean Water, which is our sewer board, I have had the experience of seeing what the budget is. There are hundreds of millions of dollars of sewer repairs and upgrades that need to be done and we are only partway through it. And I realize that some people, you know, don't like these rate increases, but to me, this is really a public safety item, that if we don't do these things, no one wants to think about the consequences. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that comment. If there are no other comments, let's open this public hearing up to public comment. If you're online, we'll give you 20 seconds to raise your hand. Are there any in-person comments, Crystal?
No, I have not received any slips for in-person.
Okay, we'll pause for just a bit. Okay, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the public hearing.
Second. Go ahead, Ron.
Ron seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes, public hearing is closed. Any further comment on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I move to introduce ordinance number.
1617.
1617, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 13.08.160, sewer service charges and fees established.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Venkatesh?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Dugan?
Yes. All right.
Seven minutes to speak.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate that. We've established our new sewer rates for three years, taking us to item 11, agenda setting. Do my colleagues have anything they want to consider on a future agenda? Looks like we're got everything done we wanted to get done this evening. Very good. Thank you, everyone. That was a heck of a meeting. We covered a lot of ground and I like where we're heading. Thank you. We're adjourned.